Monday, July 16th, 2018 Planning Commission meeting. Ms. Teague, can you take the roll?
Ms. Hockenberry?
Here.
Mr. Krausner?
Here.
Mr. Puente?
Here.
Mr. Rankin?
Here.
Mr. Stevens?
Here.
Ms. Teetz?
Here.
Mr. Bodisca?
Here.
Commissioners are present.
Yeah.
Can I get a motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
So move.
Second.
Is this thing really picking up?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we don't have to shout.
That was unanimous, we don't need to hear any nays. We have no speaker series this evening. Ms. Teague, have you received petitions for any item not on tonight's agenda?
I have not.
Okay, great. No old business, we are rolling. We are already 10 minutes ahead of schedule.
(laughing).
Okay, new business. We are going to first deal with item T zero, or is it TO, I guess, 18-01. It's the B2 text amendment for the West Falls Church, recommendation to the city council. We had this as an item last week as a work session, are you going to make a presentation for the public?
Chairman, Carly Aubrey, planning staff, senior for Paul Stoddard. I'm going to turn it over to Susan Bell, who will give a brief update on where we've been since the last meeting and summary of the school board comments that we attended last week.
Okay, great.
Thank you. Susan Bell, I'm the planning consultant on this project. If you turn to page four of your report, there's a table that lists the various comments that we received at the city council's first reading, and I'll run through them and let you know a little more detail what we have done with those questions. One of the council members asked about a .96 FAR over the entire commercial site, and that's what that could be in the way of development. Given that the policy is for 1.5 to, well, 2.5 to 4.0 FAR, it was clearly well under the policy recommendation, and it would be a very low-density kind of development, less than half millions per feet, not likely to produce the kinds of revenue that are being looked for for this project. Second issue, and it's one that we have amended in the staff language, right, in the staff report, was what's the process to amend and approve special exception entitlement or the special exception site plan? And as the language in the report notes, it's on page, line 576 of the ordinance, it's basically the same process that would be gone through today. The key is that the developer, the selected developer, would be able to answer these kinds of amendments for any of the various aspects of either approval at the appropriate interval. And we now have clarifying language in both subsections to that effect. We also had a question about phasing, and this was one that was a little bit unclear in our minds, I think, as we drafted the initial language. Current draft includes language on line 544 that allows the selected developer to build as much commercial as they wish of what is approved, but they also are expected to build some of the other uses in proportion to that amount of development in the total project. So in other words, if the total project were 50 percent commercial and 50 percent other uses, they could build up to 50 percent of the commercial, obviously having obtained the special exception site plan approval first, and they would have to build a prerado share of the residential or hotel or other uses at the same time. The original language seemed to require a square foot for a square foot, and that's not what we're suggesting, would be in proportion to the total. We also clarified in the language with respect to whether or not things would be referred out to boards and commissions, that's in there now as well. We are preparing a summary of the ordinance amendment in sort of more simple English that will be included in the PPEA package. Council wanted to know what would happen if the developer, the selected developer chose not to build something or wished to bail on some aspect of the project, and council retains the same authorities that they have today, but they also are enhanced by virtue of the agreements that will be signed. So council would be able to entertain an amendment request but would not be bound to approve it. The last item that we got out of that work session, or that first reading, was whether or not the proposed ordinance protects the city from future legislative action in the general assembly to extend the term of site plans from what is now, I believe, five years to 10, or three years here in the city. The city attorney is looking at that, but I think it's going to be more in the agreement than it would be within the zoning ordinance. When we saw the school board last Monday evening, there were a number of questions about the ownership of the property and how the subdivision would occur with the ownership today versus the ownership tomorrow, which pieces are currently owned by the school board versus the city. And as Ms. Aubrey indicated at the time, remains correct that that is a matter more to be addressed in the steering council committee as opposed to in the zoning ordinance itself. There were a number of questions about heights and shadows and how we arrived at a maximum height of seven stories for buy rate, school use, as well as how we arrived at an upper limit of 15 stories on the commercial parcel. And the seven, of course, was to make sure that the school system had adequate cushion for whatever height building they needed to build. They were very early in the design stage when we crafted the first language. 15 is considered an upper limit, plus or minus, for a marketable, trans-oriented, development type of building in this kind of location. Arlington and Fairfax have many buildings that fall into that category. It's not an absolute limit, as you know, the city council has the authority to adjust heights in their approvals. The school board also raised some questions about uses and their ability to approve uses that be adjacent to the school properties. And again, we indicated that they would be a participant throughout the review processes, both at the entitlement stage and the subsequent special exception site plan approvals. But I think they were looking for something perhaps a little bit more in the way of a veto power, but we obviously are committed to working with them to make sure that we're not creating a problem for the future. I think those are really the major issues that I have from the school board session. They are workshopping this next week at a work session that they're having, and we expect to receive a letter from them by August 3rd. And that concludes my updates. If you have questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you. When is the council expected to formally take action on this?
It's scheduled right now for August 13th.
August 13th, okay. And we're just making at this point a recommendation?
Correct.
Is August 13th their next meeting?
I don't believe it's the...
No.
They have none until...
They meet on the 23rd, and then on the 13th.
So they leave their meeting to them now.
Let me turn it over to the commissioners, see if you have any questions that you heard as a result of the latest updates from the last two weeks. No?
Don't have any questions.
Comments?
Comments, yeah.
Go ahead.
I was going to suggest that in our recommendation to the city council, that we indicate that due to the extraordinary circumstances associated with the West Falls Church project, that in my case, by speaking for myself, we agree with the proposed change of the two-step process. Just to clarify, that it's associated with these unique circumstances, not anything that we're indicating that we agree is a general matter.
It's the role of the planning commissioner.
Right, to see the site plan in trial.
Right, right.
We should make them take all of our site.
(laughing). That's the approach. That's the other way around.
I certainly agree with that comment. Is the language such that it is clear that this is simply for this particular location?
I think if you take it together, you know, given the five-acre minimum and the land use plan designation as minimum requirements, and these being the only sites so noted, it does restrict it at the present time to exactly that.
That's the G though, at the present time.
So the two restrictions are what again, just five?
Well, in the threshold for the eligibility for this B2 provision, it would have to be designated Special Vitalization District for Education and Economic Development on the future land use plan map and have a minimum acre, site acreage of five acres.
Actually, that sounds sufficient, because we're the ones that do that designation. Yeah.
Right, so you would certainly be in the discussion about any future use of this process.
Okay.
But none is planned.
You know, I would suggest we could change the motion and just say, move to provide recommendation approval for Q EK dash one for the West Falls Church Special Revital of Ancient for Education and Economic Development Zone, scheduled for second reading in public hearing, so that we actually specify it in our...
West Falls Church.
Yeah, West Falls Church. I admit that, I'm sorry. It's very long.
No, you did, I was just saying, yes, that's good.
And I just have one comment, I don't know if anyone else has comments. So I just want to reiterate, I understand why we're going to change the process on the S E E side. I still don't quite get this site plan change, I don't think it speeds the project up. I think that site plan is really a technical review, because my understanding is that we're still going to review the same things that we always review at site plan, it's still going to be a separate thing that's done, I just don't see how it speeds up any process, and I'm very concerned. I think one of the reasons why the council doesn't do site plans is, like I said, it's a technical review, it's, we're not changing wholesale parts of the project at that point, we're really looking at things like fire safety more than anything, you know, like, is the layout well, is the flow going to work okay for the neighborhood in terms of traffic, or are we going to have trucks backing up in a bad place, which is all real technical stuff. And I'm just concerned that if we, with the council doing it, there could be a change in the council in that time period, it could politicize the site plan, and you could see a push to use the site plan to try to substantially change a project that's already been approved on the S E E side of it. And I think we've seen that happen with projects. I think the city hall project's a good one to show that, that project was close to done several times, and then we had a change in the council, and then we were another three years doing it, so it ended up being more than 12 years to get approval, and twice the biggest delay was with a change in council. So, anyway, I just, I'm not against this per se, but I don't, I'm just not sure if I can vote for it because of the S E E part of it and my concerns.
Can I just add that entitlements that are granted in that S E E approval are not supposed to be up for discussion in the second review, so I think that's intended to smooth out any possible transition council membership, because they can't reopen that which was already granted unless the developer asks for a change.
And I understand that, I just, and I, and that's typically how site plan always works, those kinds of things aren't up for review. But I do think that when you have an elected body, that it's easier for it to become politicized and for them to try to use the site plan, you know, at that point, the S E, SP, you know, to try to rewrite some of that project. So anyway, that's just my concern, and I don't think it speeds the process up, so I'm not sure what, you know, but the other side of the other half, the first half, the S E E part, I totally get, and I think it makes sense.
All right, are there any other comments? I mean, for people who are just new to this issue, we had an extensive work session on this just two weeks ago, so we're just here for the formal action. But any other comments that people want to raise? All right. I mean, just, again, I said this two weeks ago, and I'll say it again, I'm somewhat involved in this process, working with Mr. Shields and Mr. Snyder, I think it makes sense, there are some risks, I think the risks are relatively small considering the other benefits that it provides. We are going to have an opportunity to review the site plan, it's just that under this system, our recommendation doesn't hold the same kind of weight that it would otherwise. Because, as you pointed out, it's a technical review, this, I'm doing this somewhat on faith, but that I am suspecting that the city council will not want to dive into those details to the extent that we do, and so I think our role, practically speaking, won't be diminished in any real meaningful way, but you're correct, if there's a turnover in the leadership at city council, you know, things could change, but I think the risk is relatively small because of the method at which this is set up and how it's not easily opened and reviewed. So I'm definitely going to support it, and based on what I've heard here, I think overwhelmingly we will as a group, but if you can't vote for it, I totally understand. This is a change, but I think in this case, it's warranted for what we're trying to do and to safeguard the other issues that are present. So if there are no other questions...
I'm just curious, could I ask you what your concerns as risks were?
It's what Mrs. Teetz said, it's just that there could be leadership that our recommendation would be ignored on the site plan, that the council would want to...
I was just wondering if there are any other...
I mean, I haven't looked at it holistically in a point like, have what's every risk that's apparent, but, so, I don't want to say that I've done a full analysis of it, my sense is that we just got pushed aside on site plan, they would want to take it over themselves, I think that risk is really small, just because of the technical nature of it and...
But it's still, it's the first time it's ever been questioned, and I know that there are other jurisdictions that do things differently, and that we have a lot more representative power, so to speak, in decisions.
Agreed.
And I would hate to see that changed in any way with any type of, even a little bit of change, and then, oh, well, we did it here, let's do it there, type of thing.
It's a real risk, I think Mrs. Teetz's recommendation for the motion is a good one, to say it's just for this.
Specifically for that site.
I think that's, I certainly would be open to that. If you think the risk and the precedent's too risky, then, you know, you don't have to support it. I don't see it that way, but you're right, this is something new and something different, but I thought it was for a specific project and a specific reason, and the benefits outweigh the risks to me. Let me make sure there's no other comments here.
I think, I'll just, I mean, for what it's worth, I think Ms. Teetz and chairman, I think, outline the pros and cons to both approaches, and I think the one thing that I think that could provide some solace to those who might be more concerned about risks and the fact that, you know, there's only so many sites in the city, this is really a unique property, it's a unique process, because of the public-private nature of it, there's a lot of things here that, not that it would be impossible for it to come up again, but it's somewhat a unique point in time related to this project, but I certainly think the motion should reflect the fact that we're not looking to set any precedence here, and we're, this is particular to these circumstances and the conditions that we're dealing with on this site.
Before we take a vote, let me open it to the public, if anyone wants to make any comments on this B2 amendment, now's the time. Ms. Teague, have you received any speaker slips on this matter?
Not on this issue, sir.
Okay. Seeing a full audience, is anybody interested, now you have an opportunity. All right. Seeing none, I'm going to close this to the public. All right, then I will entertain a motion from whomever would like to make it. And I would suggest including the West Falls Church language.
Okay. I'm going to do, I'm going to guess it's kind of odd, but I'm willing to do it.
That is odd.
I don't think you voted against your own motion, I think that goes against Robert's rules, I think.
How about someone who's going to, it's here, you just have to add in some language that says West Falls.
Just have to add in the West Falls Church Special Revitalization for Education and Economic Development Zone, this is specifically for that.
All right, I'll try to do this, I'm prepared to do this, but I can...
Do you want a bigger screen?
I keep on asking Paul Stoddard for a tablet, he's promising me he's going to get me this tablet.
Yeah, well, you know, I'm still sitting here...
Mr. Stevens has a screen.
Bringing out pages by pages.
Well, I stole one from my daughter, she's been grounded for six months from her.
Luckily, my laser surgery is still working well, and so I can read, but it's, Stoddard needs to get me that tablet. All right, so I will move that the planning commission recommend approval of T 018-1. Do I have to read it out here, or where is the language to...
I don't think so. No, this is a short, one sentence.
Right, so it's just that, and we wanted to add in, are we going to add in language?
Just specifically for...
Right, this is specifically, so I move we provide a recommendation of approval for T 018-1 to the city council, scheduled for second reading and public hearing on August 13th, 2018, with an amendment that we include in our recommendation that this change to create this alternate site plan approval process is specific to the West Falls Church for Vitalization and Economic Development area?
Zone.
Zone. Right, and then I'm open to any other, any amendments to my motion, if people want to add other language, but was there anything else that I missed?
Period.
Okay, that's it. So that's the motion.
Does everybody understand the motion as articulated?
I was kind of rambling.
Everyone except Ms. Teague. I understood it. Does everybody understand it, prepared to vote, or you want to make some amendment to it?
I understand it.
All right. Can I get a second? All right, wonderful. Ms. Teague, can you take a roll call vote for us?
Ms. Hockenberry? Mr. Krausner?
Yes.
Mr. Puente?
Yes.
Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Teetz?
No.
Mr. Bodisca?
Yes.
The motion passes at five just...
Well, I appreciate everybody keeping your comments short based on the work session we had last time, I know there was a lot of discussion about it, so. All right, moving on to item B, the reason everybody's assembled here tonight. This is technically, this is the Founder's Row Special Exception Amendment. This is the public hearing, again, once again, we had a work session on this item two weeks ago, but for the public's benefit, can you please give us a summary of what we discussed last two weeks ago?
Do you have a staff report? Is the staff one first?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I, again, for the public, please present your staff report first, and then we'll give the applicant opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Akita Ruzi filling in for sugary Fuller tonight. I think the applicant has a presentation, but before I turn it over, I'll just briefly highlight the staff report, if that's okay. The applicant is seeking an amendment to the initial special exceptions approved in 2016. The changes requested under the amendment mainly include a use change from hotel to 72 age-restricted residential units with other related changes to VCs, site, and architecture. The amendment was referred by council to boards and commissions on June 11th. The council will hold a work session on August 6th to review those boards and commission comments and the application prior to their public hearing on August 13th for final consideration of the application. Tonight, the planning commission has requested to make final recommendation to council on the proposed amendment. Staff has reviewed the application package, including the voluntary concessions dated June 4th, which is before you tonight for action. Staff review of the VCs is still ongoing with pending boards and commission comments and the upcoming council work session. We may see additional changes on those prior to the council public hearing on August 13th. The main changes included with the June 4th VCs are provided on page nine of the staff report, so I won't go into those in detail. As proposed, the project entails a mixed-use building comprised of floor, ground-floor retail office, two-story movie theater with 750 to 850 seats totaling 96,000 square feet of commercial uses, five-story residential multifamily rental apartments with 322 units, a five-story age-restricted apartment building with 72 units, and an above-and-below-grade parking garage. The final fiscal impact modeling indicated the proposed project would provide a net fiscal benefit of $1.7 million to a little over $2 million. On that fiscal impact, Becky Witzman from our Economic Development Office has provided a response to some of the questions we heard from the planning commission during the July 2nd work session on the difference between the 2015 and 2018 net annual fiscal range. In 2015, the range was $1.3 million to a little over $2 million, and in 2008, the current application, the range is $1.8 million to a little over $2 million. The difference, the primary factor in those numbers are the numbers projected for students. In 2015, 106 students were projected, and in 2018, 64.5 students are projected. It's this handout that's in the stack of your files, this is a summary of it, I'm just going over it briefly. And then moving on, 2018 schools, school pupil projection ratios used are lower than the 2015, as 301 West Broad and Lincoln units are now occupied with 46 pupils and 509 total units, and that means a .09 per unit ratio. Real estate tax rate went up from 1.3 to 1.35. Developer added through their VCs 5,000 more square foot of restaurant. And then the last reason is the known, there's now a known theater operator outside, known theater operator which has additional seats, and meal sales taxes are also added to the current numbers, and that's why there's a big difference between 2015 and 2018. And moving on to the staff report, staff continues to work with the applicant on three main elements of the application, which include general architectural design with opportunities for further refinement in material selection and other areas of design, the northwest and grow pedestrian crossing, and the third item is the ongoing review and further development of the VCs for approved special exceptions conformance. Finally, staff recommends planning commission provide a recommendation for approval to council because the project provides positive community benefits, is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and complies with the other applicable city ordinances, policies, and regulations. For that, I will turn it over to Joe.
Quick and efficient. Yep, thank you. That's going to be my thesis for the night as well, to be quick and efficient as well. Thank you all again for having us, thank you to all the neighbors and residents for coming out tonight. The presentation that I have tonight is the same presentation I had two weeks ago. The reality is we have continued to meet with the neighbors, we have continued to meet with boards and commissions, and refine our architecture, as Akita was saying, refine our architecture, refine our voluntary concessions, and advance our site plan. On the topic of site plan, we have resubmitted our site plan to the city as of last week. A package was put into staff's hands, so we are progressing forward with the site plan and with the approvals, as Akita was mentioning. So I wanted to touch on a couple of notes that were brought up in the last work session. I have the whole presentation, so again, if anyone here would like to see certain pieces of it, I'm happy to touch on those. Rather than find myself being redundant, I'll just hit on some of these key points up front. One is the fiscal impact, which Becky responded to here. I always begin this part of the presentation by saying again, the fiscal impact model is run independently by the city. We don't necessarily agree with all their inputs, we think they're conservative on some matters, but that is a city-run model, and these are the outputs. We have continued to say that the net annual range per acre is higher on the low end and essentially in line with where it was prior, but the question does continue to arise, you know, what is the apples-to-apples with a hotel? I don't know the answer to that because it isn't my model. In all transparency, it may be higher. Hypothetically, there are a variety of uses that you could put into this model to make the net fiscal impact higher. As we've touched on, as we've tried to communicate to the city on repeated instances, we did our best effort to bring a hotel into this site, which is why we sit here tonight with you all to talk about the age-restricted housing. So, you know, 40 developers have told us that this was not a viable opportunity. Working with city staff, we were able to create a use that not only is unique to Falls Church in the age-restricted housing, the active adult housing, but is unique really inside the Beltway, and we thought that was a creative solution that brings a resident class to this neighborhood for someone that isn't transient, someone that is committed to community, that is committed to local business, that wants to be active citizens here. We think it's a use that the city can benefit from, and it's reflected here in our fiscal impact numbers. And then the same is with the commercial ratio. I understand that there's been disappointment that the commercial number has dropped from where it was, which was 30-something percent to now 18 percent, or 17 percent. The 17 percent is in line with virtually every other approved mixed-use development here, and, you know, rather than, I guess, look at the fact that there's 17 percent versus 30 percent, I like to look, reiterate what I said before, which is the fact that residential isn't a dirty word, and this is a residential use that is far different than the other residential uses that you would find in Falls Church and even in Arlington. The fiscal impact is pretty fantastic, and that's where we are today, is to request that switch from the hotel to the age-restricted with the numbers backing it up. up. One other topic I did want to touch on, which is more site plan related, so please feel free to cut me off if you tell me, you know, we can address this down the road, but I feel like there may be some concern, neighbors here, as this has been a hot topic of conversation, is this issue of the crosswalk at Grove and West. This is the crosswalk as it is proposed in the site plan that we have resubmitted. This is what has been in there from the get-go, after conversations with staff, after conversations with planning commission, neighbors, other boards and commissions. Everyone does have an opinion on this, so it's been a little bit tough to, to find where the majority lies, but, you know, this is where we crafted, and I have my team here, I forgot to introduce at the beginning, my team is here, and they can touch more on this as well. So I have, we have individuals from our development team, from our architect, our civil engineer, our landscape engineer, our traffic engineer as well, so people much smarter than me can touch base on this, people with much more institutional knowledge. But this was a location that was determined after numerous sessions with staff reviewing where should these crosswalks go. As it is proposed, the crosswalk is slightly offset from Grove Avenue. There is signals, it's really hard to see on here, but there are, there is signage coming up West Street indicating pedestrian crossing ahead, and I believe that there is, no, and that's it, so there is, there is signage indicating there's pedestrian crossing ahead. We have, here are two other proposals that people have either mentioned or given us, and these are, after talking with Antonette, with Walter Phillips, these are locations that were proposed and vetted with city staff prior to where we settled on before. They have a variety of issues with them that have to do with the left-hand turns, with the white, right-hand turns, with the lack of pedestrian refuge right here, there's a bank entrance and exit right here, so there's a lot going on at this intersection right here, which is why the intersection was, the crosswalk was relocated slightly up Northwest Street, so is to be removed from this critical juncture right here where traffic can queue up and where there's a more likely chance of accident. There is the option of completely removing it, which is what this indicates right here. You could create some extended planar beds with some fencing here and redirect traffic either way through signage. Again, the, from the get-go, majority of people that we have heard from have expressed that we keep the crosswalk there, that we provide signage as we have. We have discussed with the city arborist the potential of removing, or adjusting, rather, the trees and the plantings that are here to create more direct sightlines, which are issues that we are happy to continue to work with you all, work with city staff, to evolve to make sure that this is a safe intersection. But I did want to provide that update, provide some context, and I'm happy to get into more detail as needed on that. Minor adjustment to the timeline is that now you're, if, if everything again, proceeds according to plan, is we would be meeting with you all on September 4th, not on August 20th for the review of the site plan. One last adjustment to the voluntary concessions that we made after meeting with some boards and commissions, some city council members, is we have increased our contribution to the Falls Church Library. We went from 62 cents per residential square foot to 70 cents per residential square foot. We understand that that library has come in over budget. This is about an extra $35,000, which we know isn't earth-changing, but we do believe it's a material contribution to show our, you know, our commitment to the city and to the causes in the city. So that really brings me full circle to where I started two weeks ago. I am more than happy to go into more detail with you all, but I figured you all may have questions, the neighbors may have questions, and I'll take those.
All right, thank you. Let me ask the commissioners here, do we want to ask our questions here, or would you like to hear from the public? We did a lot of this two weeks ago again. Do you want to hear from the public first, or would you like to ask your questions? Typically, we ask our questions first and then your public. Do you have preferences to how we proceed? I'm open to both.
Good question. Has the city engineer reviewed that new location? I know he was pretty adamant last time, so has he reviewed this adjusted location?
There's, there's no adjustment, I apologize.
Well, that's the same.
This is the same location, the signs are there, the only change that we are exploring here, we've had conversations with the city arborist, is changing these from regular street trees into either removing entirely or lower plantings.
He was, he was pretty adamant about.
Did he change his opinion, or?
If you're referring to Jason Whitstrom?
Yes.
Jason's opinion has always been that this should be removed. Jason's opinion is that this should be removed. What we had heard from planning commission, what we've heard from other boards and commissions is that the belief is that people are going to cross here regardless, and that as so, we should be prepared to address this as much, and so the way we've approached that is try to create as much visibility and signage as possible to indicate to drivers that that crosswalk is there. So again, this has been in there since the beginning. Jason has expressed from the beginning that he does not like that, but it's, it's been established, and it's, it's really up to, I guess, all of us now to decide what the best course of action is. This is our recommended path, but again, there's, there's other people that feel differently, so that's what we're trying to figure out.
But there's been no formal change from?
No formal change. This is what's been resubmitted.
Well, we don't have to address this issue in, we can, I'm happy to do it, but it really is a site plan issue.
I appreciate it.
Right, it really is.
Just wanted to bring it up.
And we did have a lot of opinions, varying, varying opinions from two weeks ago, and I was like.
About, or the applicant felt strong about removing it, that would need to be recommended to be removed from the VCs.
The staff has also specifically requested comments on that, right?
Yes.
On page three.
For the staff.
Top of things you're asking for.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, what are you?
Well, top of page three, it's just, it's.
Page four, three?
Several things, architecture, etc., and also our comments on this.
Okay, well, I'm happy to repeat my comments from last time, as I'm sure everyone else is.
And if I may, just before we open for questions, there was one last piece to touch on, which was the biggest point that we talked about last time, which was architecture. F. continued feverishly to adjust our architecture in line with the comments that we have received. We understand that that southeast elevation is unacceptable as it is currently designed, and we are working very hard to revise that. On the project, both in support and things that we can improve on, we will have everything updated material-wise by next Friday and submit to the city so that everyone has plenty of time to review in, in preparation for the city council work session on the 6th. So I have nothing to show you tonight on that, because we're evolving that all.
That's fine. For the purposes of the public going to speak here shortly.
Sure.
Can we, can you actually spend like two or three minutes walking us through what the architecture looks like at this moment?
Yeah, of course. So, so. For the public's benefit, I'll show a variety of perspectives that, again, are, are being updated based on feedback that we've received, but this is the intersection of Broad and West Street. This is the new age-restricted component. I don't know if this presentation has a before and after that shows what it looked like prior as the hotel, but essentially, we've created a design that we believe breaks up the facade far more horizontally with the balconies, that this looks much more of a residential use as opposed to a commercial hotel use, and provides a more attractive hard corner to the project. This is another perspective coming east on Broad Street as you enter what we are deeming Founder's Avenue, which is the street that bisects the community. This is the southeast elevation, which, again, we are, will look entirely different next week, so there's, there's, there's not much more to say on that except for that this will continue to evolve and look much different. This is looking dead-on with the age-restricted component on the right, the, the main building on the right, sorry, age-restricted building on the left, main building on the right. One of the pieces of feedback that we have received is the verticality on the building and how linear all the cornice work is, not only here, but also along Park Avenue, which I'll get to. I've only seen our sketch-ups, but I can already tell you that we have worked multiple steps into these facades so that this is not a completely linear cornice. That will be one of the major differences that you all see in the next round of elevations. This is internal to the project. This is the Market Square component, which is a public space that we see as the heartbeat of the community, a multifunctional space for performances, for events, for dining, for lounging. It has a spray ground feature that can be used just as a water feature, but it can also be interactive for kids or adults to go play in if they so desire. Synthetic turf lawn, so it's really a multifunctional, multipurpose space that we think will be a very attractive amenity to not only the project, but to the city as well. Again, another perspective of the Market Square. This is, this is Park Avenue and Northwest Street, looking at it, so again, these are what we call our townhome elements that are not townhomes, they are apartments, but they're featured like townhomes. Again, what you will see moving forward is verticality so that these are broken up architecturally, and it's not just a linear, linear work as well. And this is another perspective coming in off of Park Avenue, Northwest Street. Again, the Park Avenue apartment, apartment slash townhomes. This is the crosswalk that we've talked about, coming from Grove Avenue with the pedestrian refuge in the middle.
The one that you showed on the site plan looked like it was just painted.
Antonette?
It's not brick. And that, and that's it. So those are, those are the perspectives, I have 2D elevations, but these really tell the story much more so than those do.
Okay, I mean, this is what we saw?
Yeah, yeah, so we, again, next Friday.
All right, I know we have some comments.
Sure.
We want to make similar ones that we made two weeks ago to the, to the public.
Okay.
So maybe first turn over the public here then, and then that maybe direct our.
Absolutely.
Our.
Okay.
All right. Looks like we've received five requests, speaker slips to talk. If you wish to speak and your name is not one of these five, please, I think there's some sheets back there that you can fill out and hand to Ms. G over here now is the time to speak. The ground rules, as always, is we give you three minutes to talk. Please, when you come up to the microphone, state your name and your address, and then you get three minutes. If you want to say something, there's not that many here, but if you want to say something that someone else has mentioned, you can just sort of give attribution to that other person, and we don't need to hear it five times, but you are welcome to say what you wish in your three minutes. All right, the first person is John Napolitano.
I've never done this before. Sit here.
Yep.
John Napolitano, 428 Park Avenue. Really didn't plan on speaking, just wanted to come up and take a look at this project. I've lived on 428 Park Avenue for 21 years. I've watched the development. I think it's been phenomenal. I think it makes our neighborhood much more walkable. I think this would be also a phenomenal project, very much for it, and nothing really to elaborate on. I don't know the project that well to, you know, maybe talk about the specifics, but if I can picture a Sunoco station and a 7-Eleven or this, to me, it's quite easy. Hate to, hate to speak and run, but I'm going to do that. But, and thank all of you for your service. Appreciate it.
You're lucky.
Thank you very much. All right. Get me with that name, I, sometimes I did it.
I should, I should just do it phonetically. Go ahead, try it.
Lisa Baroxx.
Say it all, say all the letters, Baroxx.
Baroxx, okay.
Hi, I'm Lisa Baroxx, it's at 301 Grove Avenue, and I made a mistake, I was thinking about, this was about the site plan, so I'm going to kind of shoot from the hip. You guys should have received in your packages the email I sent after the July 2nd work session, or meeting session. I just want to reiterate that I am very concerned about the student population dropping from 160 high to 64 high. That's a $600,000 change in, in costs right there alone. No, residential is not a bad word, but I am concerned about 394 residents and the expense to the city if we don't truly make the money, if it doesn't show the benefits that it says it will. I am also concerned by the fact that there is not a second anchor, as movie theater attendance is on the decline, as shown by many reports. And then I do have a statement about, I'm not going to go into all of the site plan stuff, but I am also concerned about the crosswalk. I agree with Mike Winters on the email he sent to you all regarding the crosswalk. Young people using West End Park will be crossing right there at that intersection to go to the splash ground, and there needs to be something put in place to identify there will be crossing here. If you look at the Hardested 300 West Broad project, and you go behind on Annandale Road, they have a crosswalk between two controlled intersections, so we need to keep this crosswalk in place. And like I said, the rest is pretty much on site plan, so I will wait till that comes back, and oh, the other thing, I want to make sure, do not grant the 3% reduction in residential parking. Residents will have guests, and guests will have cars, and some of them will stay overnight, so they need to have a place to stay. And just because they sign a lease that states they do not have a car, they could obtain or acquire a car while they are living there. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Jim Morrison.
Good evening, I'm Jim Morrison. I don't really know the boundaries between the different boards and commissions here, so if I start saying something that is outside your remit, I'm sorry, I'll just finish the statement, and you, tell me where else I should say it. I'm with the Steeple's Court Homeowners Association. Steeple's Court begins about 100 yards from the northwest corner of the Founder's Row site. We in the Steeple's Court HOA have had a good dialogue with the Founder's Row developers, some of whom are here tonight in the past, and we've enjoyed that, but we remain concerned about several of the project's impacts. We would not want to see the special exception approved unless some of these impacts are addressed. First, the parking. The spaces provided in the project may prove inadequate if Founder's Row residents choose not to pay for parking, but instead park on the streets. This may be aggravated by visitors to Founder's Row who simply don't want to park in a garage, even if it's free, as happens to some extent with the Mad Fox parking a few blocks away. So we would request permit parking along Park Avenue, Steeple's Court, and Grove Avenue, limited to residents and visitors who are displaying permits only. We would like to see this enforced particularly on evenings and weekends and overnight. Second is traffic management on West Street. That's already been talked about to some extent here. It still needs work. West is already a dangerous confluence of heavy traffic at peak hours, with cars turning right and left and entering from multiple directions via a rapid series of streets and parking lots. Add to this poor sightlines, lots of pedestrians, and bicyclists on the WNOD trail. Founder's Row with 300 apartments and multiple shops would amplify all this. The proposed stoplight at Park and West is a good first step. Curving the bike trail on the WNOD trail as it enters West may improve the sightlines and may slow down the bicyclists who often shoot through traffic on Grove and West. The design of the stretch of West should, above all, discourage jaywalking. West will be even more dangerous than it is now with additional lanes of traffic and with heavier traffic generated by the proposed Founder's Row. Third, the proposed section of new sidewalk between Grove and Steeple's is also problematic. It essentially duplicates the WNOD trail and the existing gravel path just to the other side of it. It would tempt pedestrians to jaywalk, which, as noted, would be even more dangerous later than it is now. It would require the removal of shrubbery that currently forms a buffer between the commercial activity in Broad and West and the residential areas of Grove and Steeple's. This buffer will be critical if Founder's Row is built, given the additional noise and activity the development will create. Loss of the buffer would also amplify the visual shock of a sudden transformation within half a block from two-story residential neighborhoods to a dense multi-story high-rise in Founder's Row. We also need to protect Grove, Park, and Steeple's residents from being blocked in by traffic, particularly at peak hours. We strongly urge the commission to include plans for signage and street painting on West that will remind motorists not to block these streets. It is particularly critical for us on Steeple's, which is a dead-end street with no other access to an entrance or an exit besides West Street. In my written statement, I've included some comments on the projected school enrollments, which others have touched on, but I'm sure that's outside your remit. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Laura Gogol.
Hi. I don't think I've spoken in front of the planning commission yet, and I wondered if it'd be possible to have one of those pictures. Could you show the picture of that we would have of the Park Avenue side?
Yes.
Approaching from behind, coming down west?
Yes. Can you just state your address?
Oh, I'm sorry, 308 Pine Street, and we've lived there probably like 22 years, 1994? Yeah, that one. So my concern is that, you know, I had been very concerned and had a lot, talked to a lot of our neighbors and worked very hard with the first round of this project. lot of our neighbors and worked very hard with the first round of this project to have the height of the buildings on Park Avenue side, all the way up wrapping around West, going, you know, going toward the front, brought down, because it was our argument that, you know, six stories was just too tall for that street. It's a residential street, and its residential neighbors all around. Maybe on Broad Street, six stories makes sense, but we didn't believe on Park Avenue, six stories made sense, and we were very upset about it. So we were really happy when the developer changed the plans and dropped it down at least one story. It wasn't what we wanted. We would have liked only four stories, because honestly, the buildings up by the library and everything are just four stories tall on Park Avenue side, and that already feels very hemmed in. You really feel when you walk down there, you're in a corridor. But, and on this side, you wouldn't have it on both sides, but there you don't either. So I just think, you know, that height is an issue. And I'm upset that I'm seeing this, like, this tower there on the end that appears to go up above the five-story, 55-foot limit that I thought was established. So I'm curious about what the height of that tower, and I also don't think we need a big red logo on a building facing a residential neighborhood. I also think that's just kind of loud and obnoxious personally. So I just think the look and feel of that, I know they're working on some of the cornices and trying to make it look more like houses and neighborhood than a big building. But I'm, you know, I agree also with the comments that have been made about how bare that looks, and I couldn't tell if that was just because it was architectural drawing or whether they really intend for it to look that bare. But, you know, that just is very stark contrast, you know, you're coming from our neighborhood. I live up on Pine Street. We live right off of that first intersection there at Lincoln and Pine, Lincoln and West. And so I just think that, you know, just having it, you know, feel more like a neighborhood and retaining more of the charm that we have tried to establish there now. Individually, you know, the 7-Eleven and the Sunoco are not necessarily charming, but on the other side, which is where you're showing all this just plain grass with nothing around it, that is not what we want our neighborhood to look like, so. I also will reiterate the concerns about the students, because I think that as a parent myself, you know, this development is much more appealing to me as a parent than any of the other developments I've seen in the city. You know, you tell me about any of the other high-rise, multi-story buildings, they're not in neighborhoods I would prefer to live in with young children. This is a neighborhood I would have liked to live in and chose to live in with young children. And so I think you're wrong, I think the estimates are wrong about the number of students you're going to get. I think you're going to get a lot more students than you think you will, and this one is going to be higher than the other developments. So, thank you for listening. Appreciate it.
Thank you. The last one I got is Kathy Kleiman.
I'm going to move it over so I don't wind up kicking the two rails over there. I can't do this. So hi, I'm Kathy Kleiman at 203 Grove Avenue, and thank you for holding this hearing. I join with Vipis in saying this is no longer an exemplary project. We've lost 80,000 square feet of commercial space and the first anchor, the hotel. And I believe Planning Commissioner Melissa Teetz said it right, that this should be one level lower, the density, this is the densest project in the city. And, you know, had this come to us two years ago the way it was, it would certainly be smaller. And so with the special exception amendment, let's make it smaller. But knowing that might not happen, I'd like to urge you to make some small but substantial changes to protect the nearby neighborhood and the people who use the WNOD pass, because we've got two things going on. We've got this very dense project with commercial uses, and we've got a residential neighborhood right there. So I've talked with my neighbors at Staples Court, at Jennifer Lane, and on Lower Grove Avenue, and we have several requests, and I'll be circulating a letter to you. We would like to restrict parking on Jennifer, Grove, Chestnut Park, and Staples for residents only. The developers have asked for a parking reduction and said that they could handle it? Good, let them do that, and let's hold them to it, and let's provide the nearby neighbors with quiet and sufficient street parking for their spouses, children, and guests, and let's help the developers figure out, if they got their formula wrong, let them figure out how to deal with it. I think that's fair. Slow down the bicyclists. I don't know if this is the right time to say it, but it should be in the voluntary concessions. Let's put an S curve in. If we're modifying the bike path to begin with, let's get an S curve in, something to physically slow down bicyclists as they come down over Grove Avenue, and alert them that they're coming into a more urban-like area. Okay, this is a little controversial, but it's already been mentioned. Please remove the crosswalk at Grove and Northwest. I know we're not the loudest voices talking about that, but it's dangerous. It's dangerous now with the crossing. It will be dangerous for pedestrians, as the city has pointed out, and here we agree with the city. Visibility is difficult on this corner. It's difficult from both directions. You're coming around curves. There's going to be another lane. Children are often smaller than the SUVs that are crossing. Making a left turn is really tough, and you're keeping the no right turn lane. So balancing all of that when you're trying to make a left turn, so for pedestrians it's dangerous, for drivers it's going to be impossible. How are you ever going to make that left turn at rush hour when you have a pedestrian at real crossing? Send the pedestrians, and we're already routing them, to two good places that have signals, Broad and West, and the new intersection at Founder's Row, Park, and Northwest. Send them there, and we'll be able to get out of Grove Avenue. Not just us, but the teachers at MEH, and George Mason, and the commuters who do come through Grove Avenue. Remove the sidewalk along the WNOD that is now going on Northwest Street. You don't need it. It's redundant. I'll just show you how much this lovely green buffer is now going to be all impervious surface. You don't need it. You've already got, you're going to have a lovely bike path that's going to be fixed. You're going to have a new pedestrian path, because that's part of the improvement all the way across the city of Falls Church. We don't need a sidewalk there. We need the buffers there. The Vipis planted the fire bushes to be a buffer specifically from the traffic and the noise of Northwest Street. We need that more than ever. So let's just stick with the bike path and the pedestrian path that will be improved through there. And you have the safety concern that it will route everybody to the intersection right here above us that has the lights, that's the main kind of back entrance to Founder's Row, instead of having people fighting with the cars trying to get out of Grove Avenue. I know I don't have much more time, so I'll throw in one more controversial thing. Please have the developers pay for every child that goes to the city schools. That way, we don't have to argue about formulas or have them pay for every child over the estimate. We don't have to worry about what formula it is. They're telling us no children in the 55-plus apartments? Good. If there are children, pay for them. If there are more than 65 children in 322 all-age apartments that are family-friendly with a pool coming in off Park, good, pay for them. Thank you. And I'll be circulating the letter around that talks about this.
Okay, great. I was just going to say, do you get any more? I'm sorry. You go inside.
If it's this one we've already circulated here?
Yes. Would anybody like a hard copy? Yes. You already have one. Thank you. You're amazing.
You're off.
Hi. Not sure if I need the microphone. Probably not. I think this might be my first or second time in front of this type of group. I kind of want to just reiterate a number of the different items that have come up. I've been at 203 Grove for, I think, about eight years now. I'm going to start with the bicycles and the bicycle path. I'm a local Northern Virginian, grew up here, lived here most of my life. I have never seen a spot that is so dangerous for bicycles. Bicyclists come flying over that bridge. It's really fun. It's really cool. It's extremely dangerous. Some stop, most don't. The idea of some kind of an S curve feature on the downhill ramp is a real good one. You could put in an S curve there and have some kind of a little guardrail so that they can't jump it, and they would slow down, and it would help a lot. Next, at that same intersection, the Grove intersection, I think Kathy made a really good point, that I'm an SUV driver, I love my truck. Love my truck. But for me, I can see out of it kind of lower for a four-foot, three-foot tall smaller person. When Kathy sits behind the wheel of my SUV, even with the seat up, it's harder for her. Her angle out is lower, and I know she's not the only woman who occasionally drives an SUV. My point is that that is a very difficult intersection to keep safe. Regarding the crosswalk, I'm kind of neutral. I go both ways with it. I think it's perhaps inviting a problem. It depends on what's going on there. If you keep the sidewalk there, the five-foot wide, I believe, is sidewalk, that is a disaster in the making. I can, you know, I actually dreamt about this. I see kids playing soccer on that sidewalk, you know, 12-year-old kids, bam, out in the street, bam! And I want to do that again! Because if we are stupid and we take down those bushes and we let, we encourage the free crossing of that, we are putting people at risk. And I really want to be sure you get that, because I think it's really dangerous to do that. For a long time now, I've been talking about other factors that I don't know if it belongs in front of you guys, things like, you know, 100 so much alcohol. Every time I turn around, there's alcohol coming out of this or that place, you know, all the restaurants, all this and that, and they all have alcohol. Okay, fine. I think that's a dangerous thing. I think from what research I've done, the number of students per family at that location is specious, because, talk to any real estate agent, what's the big deal? The schools of Falls Church. And what's the next big deal? Walk to the schools. That is an extremely walkable location. I live, what, 100 yards, less than that, away from that spot, and our children have walked to and from school there for years. It is a marvelous thing. The park is an extremely attractive place. We have to work very, very hard to keep this area safe. Very, very, very hard to keep this area safe in Falls Church, as wonderful as it is. Finally, I want to reiterate that the building, the way it looks, at least in these things, is not too good. I really think that they can do much, much better. We as a community have, if they had to pay us for the amount of man-hours that was put into this thing from the community, re-architecting this thing, wow! I don't think they could afford to build it, period, because all of the community's put so much into it. We've got to get this a little better looking. And I guess that's the majority of what I have to say, and thank you very much for listening.
Before you go, did you give your name and street address?
Sorry. Mark Massey, 203 Grove Avenue.
Thank you very much. All right. Got a lot to talk about. I'm glad we actually left public comments prior to our questions. I think that will instruct us. I have numerous questions as a result of those. At least I want to understand the justification for any of the things. But I'm going to turn it over to my fellow commissioners to respond first. Anybody like to go first, questions or comments?
I can go. Well, just, I have a couple of things for staff. One, I wasn't sure why in the handout we were given, the updated fiscal analysis, that why didn't you fill in this blank list? Just to put the ratio in and give us the number of pupils. We just got a total of 43 at the bottom. I just say this because I think that it would be good for people to see what the ratios are based on the size of the units, because it's the size of the units that in this bill didn't make a difference on what your ratios look like.
I'm going to check with Becky. I'm not sure what we get from the school is confidential or not, so.
Oh, maybe.
I don't know what the ratios are, but.
I don't think so. This formula seems to be like, this is the units, there's a ratio which is told down here, and then what the number of pupils are. So I don't think that would be confidential.
No.
Anyway, I just think that would be, I think that's something people need to see, that there, and my assumption here is the ratio differs based on the type of unit, and it shifts. So therefore, I think it would be good to have that information in there, make it clear. Like, you know, while we are walkable, we're walkable to the middle school and high school, and I don't think a lot of people are going to have, you know, a one-bedroom with a couple teenagers stashed in a closet or something. It's just not going to work size-wise. I mean, obviously, we can have small children. We need buildings occasionally that have small children in it, but it doesn't usually have children because of the size of the units. So I can say example. The other thing is, you guys mentioned that you had three big things still, architecture, which I think we all agree on, and the Grove pedestrian crossing, which sounds like there's a lot of different fields for it. I actually over, I just, I keep coming back to it and coming back to watching people run over there. I'm actually, I'm against having a crossing. I'm not sure we can make it safe, but obviously, if we do have it, anything we can do with signage, just moving trees, sounds like a good thing. But you also mentioned VCs, and I was looking through the staff report again. You guys don't specifically say, like, what, like, you list some of the changes and some of the differences. What parts of the VCs are really outstanding and need to be updated according to what the staff's point?
The third submission is, or, I'm getting the site plan confused. The SC is out right now for DRC comments. We've gotten most of them back, and I think, and they submitted an updated version to us last week that had addressed a good bit of those comments as well. I know there are some building safety items still left. Clarification, I think, on the age-restricted children, and I'd have to go back and look and see what.
So just generally, like, cleaning up some to make sure it's clear and?
Yeah.
Yeah, because I just, I was...
So the third item on that list actually specifically talks about the reduction, there's been some small reduction on the office square footage, and then a reduction on the ground floor commercial. So those are some things we need to clarify with the applicant, and the city intends to do that with some conversations, and we're trying to schedule a meeting with the city and the applicant to talk about the VCs, and we had planned on bringing that up. So that's a small item to clarify. Either the VCs need to reflect to request a reduction in those two things, office and the ground floor retail, or they need to add back those square footages. So that was the third item on that list.
Okay. So generally, this is not the thing that you, this thing, there are some things in flux, but not anything major. It's more that they need to clarify that, clarify some of the language related to some of the issues that were brought up in the list. Okay. And the other thing I just wanted to mention, the staff had a nice list in here about architecture. Yeah, I'm getting it good. Anyway, I thought they made a good point. They kind of sum up a lot of the frustration I got from the AAB's letter and some of the stuff I filled, you know, that the age-restricted building isn't where it needs to be at all. That, and the staff made a point that we hadn't really talked about before, but I think they're right. The retail, when you look at the retail space, it doesn't really stand out that much, and I think that that's a really good point, that that needs to be articulated better. And the staff, the other thing on their list was the materials issue. And I still believe that we could do a little bit more brick masonry, and I'm still concerned about, like, the color of that, the age-restricted building. You already talked about, you guys are going to work on what I call the prison wall, the southeast. And like I said, I'm not as worried about the middle part, which I think eventually vegetation will probably cover anyway.
Yeah, no, it's a hard corner.
It's those corners.
Yeah, no, absolutely. And we understand that entirely. And from a retail perspective, the perspectives that we show here are essentially blank storefronts. The old renderings did a better job of explaining those, if you think mosaic. One thing that we have done is we have a manual that's about 50 pages, the details in, like, fine detail what our tenants are going to be required to follow from storefront design guidelines. I'm going to have that next Friday for you. I'm working on trying to finalize that, so you all will be able to see exactly, I mean, the tenant's going to have leeway, but you'll get a feel for what these storefronts are going to look like, so.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am?
You keep saying next Friday. What's happening next Friday?
Sorry. So when, one of the things that's been brought to, our next session is August 6 for City Council. So we want to make sure we have materials into the city staff next Friday, the 27th, so that you all, neighbors, everyone has a chance to review before we go meet with everyone on the 6th.
And when will we have a chance to re...
And when will we have a chance to review that?
Once staff posts them to...
It's going to be post our recommendation unless we continue, don't I?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I think, I think that gets to another issue. We feel like the architecture has been quite a bit in flux right now, which makes it a little bit hard making a recommendation, unless, I don't know. We, I guess we could add something to our motion to ask the council specifically look at architecture.
Well, one of the, one of the things I would like to say is that, and I'll reiterate what I said last time, there's a lot, with architecture comes a lot of subjectivity and comes a lot of opinions. And we've done our best to hew closely to what was approved while making improvements based on where we think improvements can come. The overall massing of this project is staying the same. The overall, most of the brick, most of the architecture you see here is going, is staying the same. We are playing, again, two major things, is the southeast elevation will be different. That will be different, for sure. The, then the verticality along the top of the buildings, those were the two biggest concerns that we heard, at least from the Architecture Advisory Board, and those are the two things that we're really focused on. So, kind of what you see, though, in these renderings, from a, from a macro perspective, is what's going to be there. We're going to work on some of the finer details.
And then I think that's fine, and those are good things for you guys to fix.
Sure.
But I, I still think the, um, the corner buildings, you know, the fifty-five-plus building, I don't think it's where it needs to be, and it still needs a lot of work. And I'd like to have heard that in your list just now, that you're going to look at it some more and think about some of the things you're going to... But, I mean, and some of it's a materials issue, obviously. I don't, I don't agree with the color scheme of the masonry that's being suggested, which apparently wasn't yellow, but he never gave me a real color for it. But anyway, I want to see it.
We have that palette?
Yeah, we saw it.
We saw it.
Uh, I think he made a new one, I want to say.
Oh, did he?
I don't know. I don't know if he did or not. I haven't seen it yet.
The architect told me it wasn't yellow. Oh, that's, if that's that, it's new. It's a little different.
Yeah, this is the one that...
For that building. Well, that's a little bit darker than what we had last time.
And that's, yeah. I can't remember what we showed last time versus this time, but yeah, that's, that's the brick for this building.
But last time it was definitely a lighter color. We had said that maybe it was a little darker.
It was going to be on the east, the southeast elevation.
Well, that's the southeast?
No, don't know that.
That's the age-restricted building.
It's a little heavy. Hold on just a second.
But then we have some for the southeast elevation, which again is continuing to evolve.
Okay.
This was, this was the one that was shown with southeast.
Right, okay.
And that's the one that continues to evolve.
And that one's not bad with the mix. I think, well, the problem with southeast was just the way that everything was laid out, and there was just not as much features going on.
We're going to, we're going to...
Yeah, okay.
Okay. The Architecture Advisory Committee's minutes had a lot of things in it.
Tons.
And, uh, and a lot of concerns. And with those concerns, I also sensed a rather frustration on their part that they had mentioned some things to you before and that it had not been addressed. And I've never heard that group come back with those kind of frustrations, which really concerns me. Usually, the Architectural Advisory Board is pretty cool. They, they make a few changes. They suggest some things. But rarely do we get such a long list of things. And I was, you know, having just seen that today, I was kind of concerned about that when we got the copy of it. And I still, didn't we really get a copy of it? Because I kept looking and looking, but never mind. I kept looking and looking. And all little pieces of paper that I print out, one page and another other and stuff like that. So I'm really kind of concerned about that and the fact that we're having to, been, we are wanting to vote on something where we're really still, things are so in flux, and it really does bother me.
So if I, if I may, the, the board was frustrated, and, but, but they also were supportive of the overwhelming portions of this project.
I know that.
Their frustrations came from those issues that I really just described. It was that southeast elevation, and it was the verticality of the buildings. That's what got repeated over. So I got the minutes today, too. We, as a team, have already created a matrix. We're going to respond to them. Eighty percent of those things, we've already got responses to. Some of them were looking at different shadow studies, new perspectives, where they couldn't see the market square from a perspective. So those are things that we're working on. In terms of, like, tangible changes to the product, project, again, it's the southeast corner and the verticality, and that's what we're working very hard on improving. So I don't want everyone to think like this, what you see here is going to be holistically different, and it's not.
But still, what, what it is, you know, it's hard to vote on something when you really don't know what it's going to end up looking like. And a couple of other questions. Now, the sidewalk situation has not been mentioned before. And I want to know where that sidewalk is and what the vegetation. Do we have any pictures? I bet it's not included.
I can see what I've got on here, but I don't know if I have.
Because I don't think we've heard that concern.
Antonette's coming up. Antonette's with Walter Phillips. She'll be able to...
That's a newbie. And if it does coincide with the bike path there. And the other thing is, is I don't think we can make any changes to the bike path. This talk about making eschene and everything like that, that's not our bailiwick.
There we go.
That's Park Authority. And so that, you know, we have no jurisdiction over the Park Authority.
But there are proposals to do, to straighten out a couple of places and make it perpendicular, so...
Yeah. Yeah. Well, so I don't, you know...
I think those have gone, gotten approval already.
Okay.
By Park Authority?
Yeah. And in addition, there's a full-fledged proposal for dual trails, which will add an additional change that is not being shown here, or I don't think it's one of those. I think that funding, that it received, it actually received funding.
Oh, that's the, that's the new, that's the new funding that they got to approve that?
Yeah.
Yeah. But I just was concerned about that sidewalk and the, uh...
The crosswalk one that you sent me today.
And the removal of the buffer, because I know there's a lot of vegetation in through there, and it's rather nice vegetation all the way up that part.
So my understanding is the concern is with that sidewalk, we're proposing on the, on the north side of Northwest Street. And that we were, I think, city staff, planning staff had asked us to add a sidewalk connection closer towards the street to just make that area more walkable.
But where exactly?
This right here.
That whole area? Yes.
That would mean the removal of all those really red-colored bushes back there?
They'd be gone based on the strip.
Yeah, but that's the picture of it.
You could add something else. Those would have to go.
We are proposing a landscape strip and a sidewalk, so we are also planting trees.
There is a picture of the existing conditions.
Trees and that, those are really fat.
They're fat.
They're big shrubs. They lose their leaves.
This is a picture of the shrubs, I think, right? Yeah.
Yeah. But I, I think we need that sidewalk. I think we need people, not everyone wants to go into the bike path just to... And if, one thing, if we don't do the growth crossing, we need that sidewalk for them to get to the other crossing.
Yeah, well, I was just wondering where, where it was...
That's it. So it would be right here. This is the burning bush. This is, it would be right here.
There you go. But with that, well, I don't, but anyway, we'd not heard that before.
I think we did, actually, on the first rendition, but it's a long time ago now.
Listen, that was three, three years, three-plus years ago, which also annoys me.
I remember now, because someone gave us a picture of bushes when they were red, saying they wanted to keep them off.
I mean, this project has been around for so darn long. It's, it's just absolutely frustrating beyond belief. And as much as I like parts of it, I'm so frustrated with a lot of things, the way it's been handled and everything like that for all the years, and it's just really very, very annoying. And I don't get that annoyed that easily, once in a while. But, okay, the, uh, there was a question about the height of that square tower thingy.
Yeah.
How tall is that, or is that just an illusion?
Uh, no, I, I mean, it's slightly taller than the building. Would you happen to know the height off?
Um, if you get to it...
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm trying to find it.
These were the last ones.
We're just trying to take notes from the people's concerns.
So it's five stories, it's a five-story building. This is more of like a pen, uh...
Yeah, it's just a tower. It goes up just to kind of give the illusion of a tower. There's not really any, um, there's no, you know, a space behind it. There's an occupied space. It was, I think, actually, one of the things that people would actually like, this tower and that.
They're so spaced behind it.
They, they just felt like it kind of broke up the line a little bit.
Yeah, this is, I mean, this is the concept right here, is to create focal points. You know, I mean, this is a main entrance to the community.
Right.
It is the north entrance to the community to have that kind of signal that this is a main entrance.
And part of the tower isn't really exactly on Park either. It's kind of...
It's on the curve.
It's on the curve.
What's that, that new intersection?
But that's the concept.
It's on the curve, you know, it's west.
So we're looking at Park, we're, we're looking at the townhouses, give the impression it'd be about three stories.
They are.
Right.
Well, yeah, a little bit higher, some of these, but they're great, but they're three stories. And then we go up to, like, six, I guess, and then we have the ta, five, and then we have the tower.
Yes.
But the tower, by the time we get to the tower, we're actually not on Park Avenue.
No, it's on the curve of the west.
There, that's...
That's, that's the perspective right there.
Right. And so that, that tower actually would be visible from seven, coming from Tysons, if there was a logo on it. Yeah.
Okay, there's, those are some of the ones, you know, and that whole idea that growth avenues, intersection is really, with everything going on, you know, with the, I can understand what the bicyclist is going so fast. It's a, it's a tricky place to come across because you're looking for pedestrians, you're looking for bicyclists, and I still do not know what rules of the road that bicycles, bike, those, bicycles...
Bicyclists?
Yeah, that one. Can, do follow and what they don't follow. And that has always been, you know, whether they have to stop at stop signs and things like that. But since I am not a cyclist...
You do, yeah.
Well, then they never do, you know?
That's just the law.
I know, and that's frustrating. I did see one mom with her daughter on a bicycle. They stopped, you know? I said, yay, finally saw somebody stop at a stop sign. Anyway, I probably have some more questions, but I am concerned about all the architectural things. Also, oh, in the, um, before I stop, the, I know that there were some questions from the Housing, Housing Commission on ADUs, and they were still wondering about the four units and the seventy, and the age-restricted buildings. They did suggest that maybe they wanted to look at monetary versus the units.
I'll be honest, I have, I have not heard that.
Okay, I just got...
That's in the VCs now, right?
Yeah, yeah.
The staff decided whether it's going to be monetary or...
Yeah, yeah. And then there's, so there was a, uh, a letter that was forwarded to me about that, too. Okay.
Just a couple of clarifying questions. First, on the, in the staff report on page three, the third thing staff says they're looking for is special acceptance conformance. This is a recommendation from the commission about whether or not this meets. What's, what's exactly, so the last sentence says, either retail or office space must be added back in, et cetera, et cetera. What exactly are you looking for from the commission?
That's a difference from the original.
Yes, that is a difference from the original. So the original was approved for a certain square footage for ground-floor commercial and the office. And there is a reduction with the SE amendment. So that is a point of clarification with the applicant. They will either need to amend their VCs to reflect the new square footage numbers, or they need to request that formally from the council, that that's part of the SE amendment.
So what's the question for the commission?
Either one?
I, yes. Either one of those, either a clarification or make an amendment to the voluntary concessions to reflect the current numbers, or request formally an amendment to the SE-approved numbers.
And if I may, I do think, if, if they're not reflected yet, I thought that we had updated those numbers to reflect our current, not just retail, but residential theater. Like, we've tried to make sure those conform, so that has been part of the updated VC package that's going before the city council.
Another question. On page twenty-one, we're talking about the parking. There's a note that says the applicant is proposing to overpark based on the results of an Urban Land Institute study last month. Is that, is that something that...
So that is, that, that was part of my presentation that I gave to, I believe, at least, is this the, the part of the presentation that I gave where I cited the Urban Land Institute study?
I remember the overpark part, having that conversation. I don't remember if I saw the slide.
Yeah, it was because of the ULI, the shared parking model. I touch on that or not.
And so you're saying this, this study came out and gave you, caused you to increase the amount of parking on the side?
Well...
And to overpark.
Technically, technically, we are requesting, and I should, so, we are requesting a five percent reduction in the city's requirements.
But he's saying the study suggests that's still overparked.
Or...
Even their three percent, whatever the reduction is.
Yeah, what that study would suggest is that for the general portion of the year, that's overparked nominally, right? And that peak hours, we would need supplement valet. So that's what that study suggests, and I can go into more detail as needed, but we spent a lot of time.
Not, not, not well-suited for reality based on the study.
I, I cited this number before, and I'll, I'll bring it up again, is that we developed the Mosaic project at Mosaic, which is a very similar environment. It's about a mile from Metro. We developed that one at about a one-point-four spaces per unit. This one's at a one-point-three spaces per unit, so we lessen that. That one is actually occupied at point-nine spaces per unit. So, um, you, so you could argue, so, so I, I say that for two reasons. One, for the neighbors, who we certainly hear their concerns about us not providing enough parking. We do believe we've provided enough parking for our residents. That one-point-three ratio is in line with other communities in this area. And the reality is, we are seeing that that might be overparked, that those parking spaces might be reallocated to retail, you know, moving forward down the road, depending on how this all plays out, so...
I've talked about our parking ratios for a long time. I think they do need to be revised for sure. The other thing I'll say, I think I really want to see some effort made to this, this whole intersection, this Grove and West intersection. We've heard all these comments tonight. There's also a lot of rhetoric here around walkability and all these trying to, but this is geared entirely for automobile, right? These, these curves are really, really, the radii is too high. If we really cared about pedestrian safety in this area, we would do a lot more work, I think, to tighten those radii and to really make, to do something very, very different than accommodating all the traffic that's going to come through here. So I would really love to see, I want to see the crosswalks steady, because I think it is important for all the reasons you've talked about. There are, there are illuminated crosswalks, there's all kinds of new things that are out there. This is not an issue that's unique to Falls Church, though. There's a lot of folks who've been trying to deal with this. And then really, change these side, these street configurations, so these are more ninety-degree turns for something much smaller than it is right now, which is, uh, it's, I think right now it is too dangerous. You would have to really cut that down. Right now, yes, that'll probably mess up the traffic models. It'll make traffic slower, but I think what we're looking for is slower traffic here instead of the faster traffic. So I'd really like to see a lot more attention paid to particularly that, that intersection there, and something very, very different that we don't have right yet.
I'll make a few comments. And I, you know, while I share, you know, some, actually, I share a lot of, you know, a lot of the concerns that have been voiced. I mean, overall, you know, I don't, I think we shouldn't lose sight of, despite how long it's been, I mean, the, the unique opportunity this presents, the consolidation of parcels at this site. And so overall, I mean, I think, you know, we're here to talk about primarily the change, you know, in the, in the SE approval, the change to the age-restricted. And initially, I was disappointed, like I think a lot of us were, but, and as I've come to think about it more, I mean, I think overall the change to age-restricted is positive. I think the folks who will live there will spend more time in the community. They'll be, they'll make the area more vibrant. We discussed this a little bit at the work session, but, you know, I think overall that it's a, it's a positive change. And I know that, I'm not just speaking for myself, but other people in the community have spoken to me. I've indicated that they had some concerns with the hotel as far as, you know, being more transient, and this will have a more permanent type of resident added to the city's, you know, mix. And there certainly is a need for age-restricted. And so, you know, I, I definitely echo the sentiments of my colleague here, who's, who certainly knows a lot about transportation. I mean, there, there has to be an engineering solution for that crosswalk. I think it's a natural, people are, people, it's human nature to want to cross at an intersection where there's a huge attraction right across the street and take the shortest path. People don't like to be routed circuitously. If there's a very obvious way they can cross to get to the movies or a restaurant or some other use, they're going to try to cross there. And so I think there needs to be an engine, and I, I'd certainly heard ours, Mr. Witstrom at the work session, speaking very loudly that, at least as it's proposed now, he felt from an engineering perspective, he had some serious reservations about it. So that all, again, begs for an engineered solution to make it work. And there are things related to the geometry and things that could be looked at to make it a safer pedestrian crossing. And so I really would, I'll just echo those comments. And same thing goes for the sidewalk there. I think we need to, wherever we have an opportunity to add a sidewalk in the city, we have to add it. The city has so many neighborhoods where there are no sidewalks, sidewalk on one side of the street, sidewalks that start and stop. And if every time we have an issue, we take an attitude, well, it doesn't really go anywhere, let's not do it. I mean, that's how we, we are, that's what we have, what we have now. And so anytime there's an opportunity for a sidewalk, I think we should put a sidewalk in. I think if it's an issue of replacing some of that, the shrubs that are there, I think the shrubs could be replaced. You know, perhaps with something else, as far as creating, you know, putting some green back in there. But I think it's not duplicative to have something for pedestrians, something for bicycles, and separate that traffic out. Even if the WNOD adds their second trail in the city, which I understand they're proceeding to do. Again, having, having a complete sidewalk, sidewalk network is very important. It sounds like the architecture will continue to be refined. I mean, I, something overall, it's evolved a long, a long way, you know, we've gotten to this point through many iterations. I think overall the architectures continue to move in a positive direction. And I think, you know, it sounded like the, the, the Architecture Review Board's comments are, are being addressed, and so I'll, I'll leave that. The, people brought up like the bedroom mix again. I, I think that the bedroom mix will determine the student population that's generated out of here, you know, and that's been borne out time and time again, not just in Falls Church, but other places as well. And I think the bedroom mix here, you know, I think is, is, is the type of mix that I think is reasonable for what the city's looking to do as far as not overburden the schools. And so, I mean, and that, and I, I'm okay with that. Issue of, of parking, I mean, I think, it sounds like the ULI study is, is still saying that we're perhaps overparked, but, I mean, the city has experienced now with permit parking, you know, as was done, you know, around the Harris Teeter project. And so if it, if it turns out that Grove and, people mentioned some of the, and Staples and Jennifer, I think, are private streets, so that would be, I mean, those are, those could easily, the HOAs there could easily restrict parking, I'm sure they already do. But as far as the private, the public streets go, you know, the city certainly has the tools in its arsenal to address that, so to try to just put that out there, but that.
Later.
Right, that could certainly be, be, be addressed. So overall, you know, again, I'm, and I speak for, again, a lot of neighbors, I'm, I'm a, I'm a neighbor to this project, I live on the 1,000 block of Lincoln. I'll probably be able to see the very top of that tower from the upper floor of my house. And a lot of my neighbors, you know, are very excited. They were excited when it first, you know, was proposed, they were a little disheartened about how long it's taken and, and some, some were a little skeptical, but overall, they're, they're generally supportive. Doing something like this at this corner, I think it'll be a huge positive for the city, and so I'm gonna, I'm definitely going to support the, the amendment tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Stevens?
Uh, yes, I'm also intending to support approval of the amended special exception. Flesh out a few thoughts. First of all, I thought the staff memo did a very good job in highlighting most of the key issues, so I thank them for that. I think the tax yield of approximately $2 million a year is very much needed by the city to help pay for major construction projects for which we've committed ourselves to. I think, in fact, the revenue estimates are probably understated, as the fiscal model does not include purchases made by the Founders Row residents at other city establishments. So this is something that the Chamber of Commerce highlighted. And Mill Creek proposes a large one-time payments to support the schools, the library, the arts, and they make significant improvements to the ADU and the bike share programs. So while this is, project is primarily residential, the burden on city services is relatively light. And I think residents are needed in the commercial corridors to support businesses and contribute to a livelier street scene. Also, I think the new retail establishments will add to the walkability of the city. So the substitution of an age restricted facility for a hotel, I think, is one of pragmatic necessity, inasmuch as a market response demonstrates that a hotel at this location is just not possible. Regarding parking, a three percent overall reduction below code is requested. So they're talking about twenty-seven, perhaps, spaces out of a total of 1,061, it's, it's not a large number. I think the city code outlines requirements to justify a reduction, and I believe that those, in this instance, have been met. However, I do support the neighbors that should parking spillover occur, especially on Grove Avenue, that it's incumbent on the city to address the issues through the use of the same kind of programs that I've seen in Arlington, near the, the East Falls Church Metro Station, and that seems to have worked very well over there. I think the queuing of traffic along Northwest Street and West Broad Street will worsen as a result of this development. But I attribute much of what exists there today by way of congestion to drivers who live and work outside of the city and want to use Broad Street as their means of getting from work to home and vice versa. And I understand their concern, but I don't think it's reasonable or responsible for the city to suppress our needed development to address cut-through traffic suggestion, or congestion, rather. So one area of concern that I do have, notwithstanding all of the positive things, and that has to do with the lack of any environmental green building certification for the 95,000 square feet commercial retail and office space. And I think this sets a very bad precedent for large commercial projects in the city. And simply just falling back on the least common denominator state commercial building code is not a good outcome for a city that is trying to reduce its overall greenhouse gas emissions. And provide energy efficient building space to commercial tenants who are responsible for paying their own utility bills. So inasmuch as the, the staff memo indicates that discussions regarding the voluntary concessions are continuing, I'd like to include in our recommendation to city council that further exploration take place on certification options that are agreeable to city and to, to Mill Creek for the proposed, proposed 95,000 square feet of commercial retail and office space. And then one last thing, during our workstation, the developer indicated it was agreeable to placing several of the equipped electric vehicle charging stations in the commercial portion of the parking lot. So I would suggest that we add this to the voluntary concessions.
Breaking you're up. Cool, I have some thoughts. The, this is, oh, sorry, here, this is up. The crosswalk and the sidewalk. I think since we have, it seems like we're going to be taking some action, and this is still an issue, we should, I, I suggest one of two things needs to happen, and I don't even know that we, we have to pick which one. But I think either, either there should be a crosswalk, if there is a crosswalk, there should be some other things. Last time we talked about reducing the speed limit on here, apparently we talked about doing something about the trees on the corner. Behind the Harris Teeter, there's the flashing lights on the mid-block crossing, could that be something to be implemented? Can you, can the crosswalk be raised a little bit, could we use different materials in the road? So I think if there's going to be a crosswalk, we have to do more than put a few signs on, on West Street, hopefully it'll slow down, we, we need to require more safety measures. Alternatively, if we remove the crosswalk, I think, I actually think if we remove the crosswalk, then you certainly don't have any need for a sidewalk on.
This is this.
Yeah, if you remove the crosswalk, you don't need a sidewalk on the top of Northwest Street, because we, we walk on that sidewalk. So I think if you didn't have a crosswalk, you don't do the sidewalk, or if you do, you do it on the other side of the bushes, neither that becomes tricky because it's part land or whatever. But I would also, if you look at the satellite picture, the, this sidewalk actually extends past the bike path and then stops right here. I have no idea why this exists, but I would rip that up so that if anyone was coming down this side of Grove, they would cross here, where there's a big crossing, and go down here. So, and I would beef up whatever's planted, so it's basically impenetrable. So I think you got to do one or the other, you either have to go with the crosswalk, but make it more than what's there now. Don't do the crosswalk and, and have basically in your proposal a plan for making that safer, which I think would involve both a bunch of signs, but also better bushes and stuff like that. So I think it's got to be one or the other. I think if you just don't do the crosswalk, or you just do the crosswalk with a few signs, where that's more than creating a dangerous situation. That's my thought on both the sidewalk and the crosswalk. I was hoping Becky would be here, because I've asked her a million questions about the fiscal impact, but I'll just ask a few, and I think I've figured out most of it. But one of the things I'll ask you is, page four of this presentation we got.
I don't have that presentation.
Well, the one where Melissa asked, down here it says the mix of units changed from the 2015, and this is the mix of units in the 2018, I think. Does anyone know what the mix of units was before?
I'll be honest, I don't recall. It wouldn't have been, it wouldn't have been significantly different, but I don't know the difference.
The fiscal impact is interesting, because on the one hand, I think everyone's wondering, wow, is the.
Sure.
Age restricted apartments, better or worse than the hotel? And we have yet to be provided with the actual information for us to figure that out, but I do think the answer is no. If we, if we ran the old plan through the new model, I think fiscal impact would be better for the city. I think the hotel financially is better than the age restricted apartments. Having said that, that doesn't concern me too much, I don't, I'm not, to me, your, your new plan doesn't have to be better than the old plan, it just has to be okay, and I think it's fine. But I do think that there's a lot of like confusion that doesn't need to be there on this fiscal impact stuff. Another question I, I would have for Becky is, could we take their plan, knock out ten to twenty percent of the regular parking units, and run the fiscal model again, see the impact? Because I, I know people like to think that the apartments are this huge money sucker in the city, but it really comes down to the unit mix. And, and I, you know, if you literally just built an apartment building there with the appropriate unit mix, it's going to be better than what's there now financially speaking. So I don't think just making it smaller is necessarily going to be a benefit to the fiscal stuff. Now, there's other things too, there's other reasons some of them might want to be smaller, but I'd be curious to see that sometime, because I'm, because I'm curious what the actual impact of the parking space is. But otherwise, I mean, I think, you know, I, I like the plan that came before, I like this plan, I think it's a big improvement over what's there now. It achieves a lot of the goals we have with the special exception process in terms of combining lots and creating, so I think that, you know, we're obsessed with commercial and, and retail. And I understand that, but I also think that, for example, the age restricted apartments is a perfectly acceptable increase in our tax base, that will help us pay for the things that we want, so I don't think it's a problem with that. So I, I think this is what we do tonight, we have to address the sidewalk crossing thing, and I think, I don't personally care that much about architecture, but it seems like that's still something that we need to somehow address, and we're going to send it to the city council. I would support someone.
I do think the motion is going to be somewhat complicated to incorporate all the things that everybody wanted to do.
Sure.
I don't really need to repeat what my fellow commissioners have mentioned and have asked, they've certainly addressed the issues that were brought up in the public comment and their own, their own concerns. So just sort of overarching in, in a big picture, we're going to address these like specific things, I think, as we debate the motion here.
Sure.
This process has taken a long time. I, I have been on record on more occasions than I can account, than can count about my support for the project. I am going to support it again this evening. I have many, many reasons for supporting it, but overarching, the project is a huge improvement over what we have there now. I think it has many, many elements that are overwhelmingly positive to the city. There are some, certainly some debate about the specific dollars on fiscal impact, that is not your model. There is debate about, you know, how it's developed, whether it's the right ratio for students or not. Those numbers come from the, the school board or the superintendent, and so that's not for me to really comment on. I think that that model has typically been accurate in the past, this is an enormous reduction for sure, but whoever's making that decision is, you know, it's how that filters into the model. But I think that, overwhelming really, it's, it's a huge improvement to what we have, and I have all these sort of concerns about the crosswalk and the parking. And I would say, and I said this two weeks ago, I think it's actually overparked. I think it's a really reasonable request by residents to have this permit, and it's not near purview, that's certainly in the city's control. But I would strongly recommend that the city do something about these permits. This concern has been in front of us literally since the first day this was proposed. So I think it's, it's a fair one, there's concerns on Park Avenue, there's concerns on Grove, there's concerns in every neighborhood that's close to this thing about the parking issue. I don't see it as as much of an issue, but it's a real concern by the communities. And I think it's, it would be unjust, after all the things that they were concerned about, not to grant them these parking permits. I would strongly recommend that the city do that. In terms of the architecture that's been, you know, debated at great length, certainly during our work session, that was the cause of much of, the source of much of the discussion. I don't, I don't have a strong opinion about it, I'm pleased to see that it's being addressed and improved. I think the areas that the Architectural Review Board addressed are the most pressing, certainly that southeast corner, as you said, the verticality. So I'm going to leave that in the hands of other people to address, so I don't, I don't have a problem voting without knowing that particular outcome. There's more architectural issues to address, it didn't even come up today, Ms. Teets brought up her concerns about artwork, so that wasn't even part of that. And I assume that's going to go through the standard processes to make sure that we have something that's beneficial to the community. But I, so that's a really subjective thing, you mentioned that, and I happen to agree that this has changed, I think, for the better. This has come actually really, in all fairness to this architectural group, the architects, this is a vast, vast improvement over what we saw three years ago. The first proposal, I think, was maybe using my term of fortress at that point. I think they've done a nice job of certainly breaking it up and making it more visually appealing for its sheer size. I mean, at the end of the day, it has a lot of apartments and it's, it's quite big. We have dealt with this in the past, the, the concerns about the Harris Teeter building, 301, West Broad Street, where people were quite vocal about how it would just totally overdominate the block and just be, you know, such a, an eyesore to the city. And we worked hard on that part of the architecture, the people who are involved, you know, I certainly wouldn't take any credit for that, and I, I don't feel that way about it at all. I think it's just a real good addition to the city. So I trust that you guys are continuing to work on it, and I put it in your hands, it sounds like you're very, you know, aware of the issues. On the crosswalk stuff, we're going to just debate this right now, I guess, because we have to, it sounds like Mr. Quinter said, something we have to address in this because we're part of the VCs. So I think we need to have that debate about what we think we should do. I can be swayed either way, I'm of the opinion that it should be there, but safety is paramount, and if we do keep it there, then we need to make sure that it's safe. So with that sort of in mind, that's, I'm curious to hear how we come up with a solution to that. But overall, I, I really support this, and I think it's going to be a great addition to Falls Church. All right, does anybody have anything else they want to respond to, the other comments that they heard? Or we should get into this motion and see how we can revise it to meet everybody's specific needs. I do want to near, agree with Mr. Stevens about that 95,000 square feet, that was actually brought to my attention earlier today. And I do think that it's reasonable to request that you look into it. I know this is very much last minute, this is, you know, a newer issue brought up, but the fact that, I do think there are certifications that are related to just the corn shell, and I would strongly recommend that you look into those certifications for that part. I appreciate you're not doing the build out, but I think it's not only reasonable in terms of what we expect here in the city, but in terms of precedent.
Sure.
I think it's really important for what we're trying to do as a community.
Got it.
All right, so this motion is quite detailed. Staff, do you have a, I, you guys have been frantically writing notes. Do you have a sense of the, from your notes, which areas we must address, address? One, Mr. Quinter said about the crosswalk.
The crosswalk, um, the environmental certification for the commercial portion. And that's the two big ones.
Those are the two we must address. Okay, so I.
I don't know if you guys want to.
Engineering.
The sidewalk.
Because the crosswalk's.
Yeah, no, I want to talk, I want to talk about the sidewalk. So, so these are the two we have to address, is the environmental certification, oh, I think the environmental certification I would like us to address. The crosswalk, I think we have to, in terms of like coming up with, whoever's going to make the motion to either take the positive or negative on that issue. But the other thing I do want to talk about, because I just heard a bunch of opinions and sort of mixed, is if we just have a quick separate conversation about the sidewalk along, I guess, at West.
Right there.
So. The, the issue here, I mean, I'm just repeating it, everybody knows, is whether this should be in there, the concern by the neighbors is the buffer, I think that's a really reasonable concern. Mr. Prazner makes a really good point about putting in sidewalks, I have been very vocal in years about adding sidewalks when we can. So I'll just, I'll just start, but I'd like to just sort of go down the table and see where people stand on this issue. But I love the opinion that I think the sidewalk should go in, along with the crosswalk, but I do think the buffer is really important. And if that, if we're going to keep this sidewalk, I would really like to see something that says, or gets a commitment that there will be something planted that will create a safety buffer. These, these bushes are fine, but they look like there can't be.
You mean the buffer between sidewalk and the curb?
The buffer between. Between the trail and here, there's curb bushes here, behind the sidewalk, but they're going to have to be removed in order to put this sidewalk in. So. If you bring, maybe if you bring up the satellite image, just so we.
Yeah, that's going to show what's existing, I'm trying to think of what's.
How, how much room?
How much room?
Oh, I do have that.
What's the park? What's the series?
Good question.
Here's what's here, if you see from.
Do we know what the city?
It's coming back up.
I'm looking at the CDP, see if we can.
They're pretty big bushes.
But, you know, and those shrubs have grown, but those shrubs also have to sit, so I mean, if you really want a buffer, I mean, you're talking about a physical buffer, or like a buffer visually, and what are we buffering?
Personally, I think it should be a physical buffer, based on what I've heard from the community, and they want, or they want a safety issue within a.
Separate the bike trail from the sidewalk?
Correct.
That's, that's definitely. It's 11 feet proposed for the five-foot strip along the street, six-foot side.
First, we're going to deal with the crossing next, I wanted to talk about, there's three, first the sidewalk, then the crossing, and then the environmental stuff. I don't know if the environmental stuff would be that.
If there's going to be a crossing, it's going to have to be five, five, yeah, if there's going to be a crossing.
So, should I make that point of clarification?
Yeah.
Hey, if I may, point of clarification, we're looking at our drawings right now to figure out what's actually planned right now.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, we are proposing to plant a row of burning bushes on the other side of the sidewalk, so we will have to remove those established ones, but we are planting.
Does it have to be burning bushes? I mean, just because they're there now?
They're cool.
It looks like they're miniatures.
Okay, very deciduous thing, I mean, do you want it to be a year-round screen, or do you want it to be?
Okay. Sixty-one-minute compact burning bush. Just thirty inches height, minimum, minimum, yeah.
All right, let's just do one position.
They don't have any value to it.
So, the, what sounds like is proposed, so if I'm clear, is there would be a sidewalk there, and between the WNOG trail and the sidewalk are miniature burning bushes.
So, that's what they're talking about behind us, they're compacts, they're minimum thirty inches height. My landscape architect, I can hear him, is saying they grow sizable over time, but there's a lot, there's sixty-one of them.
Grass strip.
Native to China, Japan, and Korea.
New bushes.
That would break.
Native to North America.
Correct.
And it would all be on the city side.
I'm okay with that.
I'm fine with that, too.
So, I apologize for the confusion there.
Well, the plant choice, we could talk about at site plan, I mean, as far as what's planted there, I mean, we can talk about the actual species at site plan.
We would do larger.
Something better, but that's beside the point, I think that, yeah, they're.
So, if we put that physical buffer there, what do we think about the sidewalk being later, as proposed?
And just so everyone's aware, anything larger too, if we change a species, so our plans have been going to the park authority, and we're also having to do a separate Dominion application because of their transmission right-of-way, so they've seen this plan, but any changes we propose may, it is something that they need to review.
Or we just change the smaller shrubs that's needed, that has the value.
So, there's a pole, a telephone pole right here, is that going to be underground or remaining, or how does that work?
It's being removed.
Being removed.
Yes.
It looks like there's two, we have a.
Where we're moving, yes.
It looks like there's two.
There's three poles, there's three poles on that stretch.
So, if we can do that, can you plant the bushes between the sidewalk and the street?
They're proposing street trees, right?
Between the. I'm just saying, I'm saying if the idea is, you know, walking along the sidewalk, right along West Street, it would be better to be a few feet away from West Street and have a bush between you and the street.
Well, there will be a planting strip, right?
Where there's a planting strip that we're proposing street trees in?
Yeah, but I can walk past the street tree, so I can walk and go past, I'm just, I'm not saying, I'm just saying the point being, could you create a plant barrier between the people and the cars that they, it's hard to get through accidentally or on purpose? A tree doesn't pass, is what I'm saying.
I mean, this, we don't have that anywhere else, really, and most of our plant beds have trees and some load stuff, and if you want to walk through it, you can't.
No, I'm just saying, like, I'm not totally sure, already there's the bike path and a gravel pedestrian path, so I'm not really sure who's going to walk up to West Street to walk from Grove to the other West Street. I don't know what the point is, so.
Of the sidewalk?
Yeah.
I'll tell you the point, I mean, it sounded a little there.
I do that, that's.
The point is that if you're, let's say you're on the west, you know, like I do, I live on the west side of West Street, and if I want to walk south, you know, I have to cross over, if I wanted to walk to then get on, you know, if I want to walk and be able to go westbound.
What I'm saying, you wouldn't go on the gravel path, I'm curious, I'm not.
No, no, so if I'm going to the Wells Fargo Bank, maybe I'd want to stay on the sidewalk and just continue to walk down. I mean, any, any opportunity to complete our sidewalk network, we should always do it, I don't know why we ever say no to a sidewalk, anywhere in the city, ever.
I see people walking.
On any, on any stretch of road in the city, I can't think of any part of the city where I wouldn't want to see a better sidewalk, or a sidewalk when we don't have one today. There's so many terrible areas where we have nothing.
Well, I guess, I guess my question is.
I don't think that the problem is the gravel trail and the bike path are not visible from West Street, so if you're coming to this project and you haven't lived here before, you may not be aware that you could.
Coming from where?
Well, I don't know, like, if you're coming to the movie theater and you decided to walk somewhere, I don't know, like, walk to the bank, you're not going to know there's a bike path over there, because there's uphill and a bunch of bushes.
And you'd always want to mix with the bikes.
Okay, so fine, if you want a sidewalk, but what is, isn't it, it seems like a brilliant idea to put bushes between the sidewalk and the street?
It doesn't sound brilliant.
Why, is there a physical reason to do it?
I think they're, they're trying to basically reduce the effect of it by putting some bushes back.
I think they wanted a physical barrier, not for, between the sidewalk and the street, but for the neighborhood and development.
Right, right.
And what they have now, they're happy with, and then they need to be torn up to put in a sidewalk, but then they'll ultimately be replaced with smaller ones over, over time? I mean, I think it's.
No, no, I agree, I guess what I'm saying is, okay, I get that, but if you put them closer to the streets, they still get to replace some bushes, and you put the sidewalk on the other side of the bushes, is that, what's the negative? Why is that bad?
I think then it's running right next to the WNOG.
And there's a ditch, there's a drainage ditch there, and then.
So, we're going to play the bushes in the drainage ditch?
No, well, it's going to be on the edge of that, I don't know how close that is, there's like a fallen drainage ditch there.
Sounds like you have an idea.
No, no, we don't like that one.
Okay, we solved this problem, I guess we're generally in agreement with some, so that requires no change, because that was all proposed.
Correct.
All right, let's get to the hard one, let's talk about the crosswalk. For this vote, for the motion, we have to take a position, whether we want it, now, if we want it, I'm sort of part of other changes as well, but generally, if we do, just again, right down the row, who wants the crosswalk, just a yes or no, and then we'll debate it for great length. Do you want the crosswalk? Yes?
Yes.
They can be engineered to be safe, absolutely.
Yes. Yes, if we make it bring in, see to a lot of stuff.
I think if you put a sidewalk, one or two, you know, the crosswalk, I think that.
We're only allowed two choices.
If you're going to put a crosswalk, you can do more than this.
All right, so what I'm hearing is we want the crosswalk, but we, we need to have some provision here that says, as proposed is not accepted, so we need to either.
Can't the VC have some flexibility, can't the VC be worded to allow flexibility in the design of the crosswalk?
It just states there needs to be a crosswalk there, it doesn't get into necessarily the needs of that, the other.
But I think we have strong opinions about it.
But, yeah.
Sounds like we want that VC to stay then.
I have a strong opinion, which is if you're going to build a development here, you need to make this intersection safe, which either means putting in a safer crosswalk than this, or not a crosswalk and making it hard to cross there. So, to me, it's not just crosswalk or not, it's like, I don't want a pretty development if we don't have a safer.
Okay, so it sounds like from the quick straw poll, we want the sidewalk, so that means we need, and I, the crosswalk, I'm sorry, that means we need words that help us make sure it is better designed.
Here's how the VC reads now, if this helps, installation of pedestrian crosswalk, including median island for refuge across Northwest Street at Grove Avenue intersection.
Which, as a reminder, Mr. Westrom said, we plowed up the first time we started.
Does anyone, since there's certainly general agreement on this, have a proposal to make that not only more broad, but also add language that says the safety design needs to be enhanced?
Absolutely.
Right, and there we have.
Where would we insert that in the motion, is what I'm asking.
We could move that the, we could move that the VC be worded that way, I mean, there's all, there's, the VC can be worded any way you'd like, I mean, so you could, we could recommend that the VC be amended to add that specificity to be, and right now it's specifying a median, but we could allow them maybe to look at other solutions beyond that, and not tie them to what's, the way it's worded today.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah.
But we're saying we want it, but, you know, they need to find a way to work with, work with the city, work with the engineering professionals to design it in a way that it'll be safe.
I think after the, the end of this motion, you have the two whereas's, and then now therefore I move, at the end of that, add with the following recommendations for the voluntary concessions, for the, for the following items to be considered for the voluntary concessions and/or during site plan approval.
Okay, so that's true, we're going to get another crack at this, this issue, because it's going to come site plan, the reason we have to address it now.
That's true, just when they're going to do it.
Is whether they're not going to show it out. So, we think we, we think we have agreement that we want it, that's sufficient for tonight, and then for site plan, we can address the design.
Rob, does that include all yours?
But, but, but I would say it's, you know, say a motion.
I agree, I agree, because I'm making the motion, I think some of those works, but I think it's just that the voluntary concessions need to be addressed in terms of safety and design, I don't think it's as simple as that. Okay, and then the other one, does anybody want to comment on Mr. Stevens' environmental, because it is part of the motion that's going to come up, about having it initially certified for the corn shells, or, you want to explain more?
Well, yeah, basically, right now, there's no certification for the commercial, so my suggestion was that we recommend that the city council explore with the applicant some type of a certification for that large component of the development, to come up with something, so that it's not just resorting to the state code, which is very weak.
And you're satisfied with the silver?
I don't know enough about NGBS to know how hard to push on that, I know that there is a city council member who will be doing that.
Yes, we do know that.
And if I, if I may, we're meeting with the environmental committee on Thursday, and we're bringing our NGBS consultant there, who will speak about the program, our architect will speak about how that's being implemented in the community itself, so.
I'm happy to go with their recommendation on silver versus gold on that. This is just saying, we recommend that the city council include some type of examination with the developer, some kind of a certification for the 95,000 square feet.
Commercial.
Commercial, office, and retail.
Okay, all right, those are the three that we had initially identified, does anybody have anything else they would like to add to the motion?
Yeah, I think we should add something about that the special exception amendment language needs to conform to the actual amount of retail space.
It's a bird, I know, I just need an update.
Yeah.
I'll make sure that, but yeah, if you want to put it in there.
It's an issue.
Yeah.
And, I, this is, this is what I wrote, basically what we said, so.
I hear the master writer.
Any kind of motion right now?
Well, I'm not making it now, but I wanted you to hear what I would think I'm talking about adding. So, I was thinking, like, do the motion, and then we add to the bottom of it, we ask that the council pay close attention to improvements to the architecture, and confirm that all the outstanding voluntary concession issues have been resolved, including specifically, one, updating the voluntary concessions for the Grove crossing, including language that would make it safer, such as a raised crossing and flash and stop sign. Two, include an environmental certification program for the commercial space, and finally, the special exception amendment language conforms to the actual amount of retail space.
I like it.
Did we have the sidewalk in there?
I didn't, the sidewalk, we're not changing it.
Oh, okay, that's right, that's right, okay.
I have one other minor issue, but I think I might be able to resolve it here, it had to do with the two electric vehicle stations. If you're comfortable, but the two of them can be put into the commercial area, we don't need to put it into the voluntary concession.
They're in the site plan that was resubmitted, that's in there, so I'll, I'll put a floor plan in next time, so you can see that.
Okay, so, we're covered there.
So, you put on the Grove, on the, on the crosswalk.
Yeah.
Did you want to mention this reduction in streetscape? Because it's already sort of being considered, do you want to add that we like this idea for better sightlines? Because you only addressed this.
With consideration.
Yeah, I just, I just, because I addressed the stuff that Andy talked about.
Because, because we're talking about reducing the speed limit.
I just gave two examples, but we could add also increasing visibility.
Or consideration of a sightline, consideration of like sightline.
Yeah.
I think in your, like, you had for Grove, and after that should be Avenue, as opposed to a grove of trees or.
Okay, Grove crossing, I said Grove crossing, you're right, to be Avenue.
And the other issue that I had raised was, I would really like the recommendation to mention that permit parking in the neighborhoods be considered, like, that's, that's in council's, the city manager's hands.
It's a same issue.
So, I'd like to add that too, because that's, it really has been three years of hearing that comment.
Can I ask, double check on something?
Yes, ma'am.
Melissa and I were just, all that, that pork chop is not going to be there anymore going into Park Avenue, I mean, that's all going to be reconfigured?
What?
Yeah, yeah, where are we doing the intersection at Park West and going into the site?
Okay, just double checking.
Yes.
Bump out.
You don't like it?
No, I don't like it. But I remember when it was put in.
It comes trapped.
Uh-huh.
You should put more of it.
I know.
Okay, we're, we're going to, any more discussion before someone proposes this?
Nope.
Then we can discuss it at that point if we have.
Nope.
All right. Melissa, are you making the motion, or do you like someone to read your writing?
Well.
It's getting smaller.
That's because you guys kept adding stuff. Okay, no, I'll read it.
And I would love to have it after you.
But when you get down to this part, it means.
It's sideways, it's up the side.
Yeah, I'll, I'll see if I can do that. But I'm trying to, I ran out of room to add stuff. I started out nicely spacing it for you.
Nicely.
And then it went bad, and then it. I have to say, I don't know if we need these whereas's, do you guys feel strongly that we need to put all this in there? We don't normally do it, usually we just do a motion.
Good, just read it.
Yeah, okay.
Pride of authorship there.
I moved at the planning commission, recommended approval to city council of TR 18-32, to amend resolution 2016-04, granting special exception for residential uses within a mixed-use development project, and decrease the building height allowed with a height bonus of up to a maximum of 85 feet, while removing the original approved tow tail use and substituting up to some need to age-restricted multifamily residences. We ask that the council pay close attention to improvements to the architecture, and confirm that all the outstanding voluntary concession issues have been resolved, including specifically, updating the voluntary concession for the Grove Avenue crossing, including language that will make it safer, such as a raised crossing, flash-in stop sign, and/or increased visibility through better placement of trees. Two, include an environmental certification program for the commercial space. We also ask that the council urge the city manager to consider parking permit measures for the adjacent residential streets, and finally, the special exception amendment language needs to conform to the actual amount of retail space and office space that exists.
I'll second it. That's the easy part.
So, we didn't read the whereas's, though.
I didn't read them.
No.
I didn't think we needed them.
To include the whereas's.
We, we usually don't include that kind of language, we usually just do a motion.
Yeah, we've tried it with this.
I have a feeling that Paul wrote this or something.
No comment.
Do you want to make a friendly amendment to add the whereas's? That's a, that's a motion, you're welcome.
I might, I just want to read them again.
To defend whoever wrote the whereas's, I think what it's trying to do is make sure that we hit the criteria in the special exception portion of the ordinance, to make sure that it's put on the record, that we do find that it knows the criteria.
Well, I would just say, I wouldn't have supported if it hadn't been.
And that's, that's true, but sometimes it's good to put it on the record, so, but you can incorporate it without using the whereas language, if that's too highfalutin you get to say, but, but I think that's the point of it, and I actually would agree with, you know, the whereas's as far as.
Well, then, may I propose a friendly amendment? Well, then may I propose friendly amendment?
Sure.
Yes.
Planning commission adopts the proposed motion because whereas, planning commission finds that proposed project provides significant community benefits, such as providing a vibrant mixed use development that offers preferred theater use, ground floor retail, market square, streetscape improvements, transportation facility improvements, affordable housing, schools, capital cost contributions, recreational park and W and O D trail improvements. And whereas, planning commission finds that the proposed project is consistent with the West Broad Street small area plan, comprehensive plan, and has met the primary criteria of the special exceptions for the Falls Church City Code as follows. One, resulting development conforms with the city's adopted comprehensive plan and design guidelines. Two, resulting development provides for significant net new commercial square footage and allows a mix of commercial and residential uses. And three, the resulting development provides substantial positive net new commercial and residential revenue to the city. And that's it because she already said the.
Added to the front of the motion. And I will gladly accept that also.
Accepted as well. Okay.
You read, you read bedtime stories.
Just one point of, uh.
Discussion on the.
Discussion. Yeah. I think I've heard Jim Snyder refer to those crossing signals, like the one at the Harris Teeter that crosses, as a hawk signal.
Well, I think Hawk was wrong, Paul mentioned, because Hawk was something slightly different. Because I said the same thing last night and Paul said, no, Hawk is this, and so I don't, I think they're all using specific terms.
Well, I'll defer to people. I know more about that subject than I do.
Are you trying to get it included as a specific?
Well, I didn't know if we, if we were going in that direction to replicate what happened over on Anandale Road.
Maybe it was. I thought I said wrong.
I, I want to leave it open. I want to give suggestions of things they could do and then let them figure it out.
That's fine.
I think she said such as.
Yeah, such as. I didn't want to, because I think that Jason needs to look at it again if we're making a deal.
Absolutely, I agree.
Anyway, I also thought of Hawk, but I thought Paul said that it was a technically.
It was a sparrow.
Hawk is where you hit a button and actually stop traffic.
Eagle.
A hawk would have like.
Oh, the hawk is the moth.
That's correct.
You could actually stop traffic.
The hawk was, yeah.
The moth is the example, because that stops traffic stopping them lately.
So what, but I had in mind, what's mine here, it's not a hawk, but it's lighter.
I think we shouldn't tie the engineers' hands. We should essentially let the engineers.
That's right.
There are many different measures that could work. Let's, let's, let's let them.
Much better than what we know.
Look at it and find something that's safe, yeah.
This is a regression. Okay, any other further discussion, because I'm ready for a vote on this. All right, great. Ms. G, you please do a roll call vote.
Ms. Hockenberry?
Yes.
Mr. Krasner?
Yes.
Mr. Pointe?
Yes.
Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Tease?
Yes.
Mr. Wodisca?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you all.
It's going to be eight hours of commission reports, commission reports, meetings. Eight meetings in the last week and here's, I don't know, recently, I just. How much you drive to Savannah, by the way? You did that, you said the last meeting, you said you were doing the long drive the next morning down to Savannah? How'd that go? It's a full day of driving.
Seven and a half.
That's fast. It's pretty good. It's like at least five hundred miles, right?
Right at five ninety-eight.
Okay, six hundred. It's a heck of a road trip.
It is. But it's, you know, you just get on ninety-five, cruise control.
Right, ninety-five the whole way.
Well, there's no roadworks on any of that.
How long were you down there?
Uh, four days. In fact, it's super.
Down there.
It was very nice. Yes, although pretty soon I think we're going to try the train. It goes to Savannah. It gets down there at nine.
Okay, okay. We're going to address all the comments.
But no driver, just sit there and veg out.
Okay, well, we're going to keep prepping. Thanks so much.
All right, let's, let's wrap up this meeting. Okay, wonderful. We have just a few more items on our agenda. They are, they are quick if everybody cooperates. The next item is, we have no other business. Now we have the approval of the minutes.
They were awesome.
They were brief and, and all agree awesome.
They are brief because these are being recorded and I have to play them back on YouTube and it's horribly, stop, stop.
Oh, God.
They should be brief because they're being recorded, period. And they should be linked to YouTube.
I agree.
But, okay, anybody have any comments on these minutes?
No.
Fantastic. All those were.
I.
Abstained you neither.
And one abstention.
I guess he's, the chairman made the motion?
I did.
We just took them all. Let's get out of here.
You're right.
I'm sorry, who seconded that?
I seconded it.
Thank you.
Retractor.
Ms. Hockenberry made it. There you go.
All right, next item. Planning commission reports.
I've been to lots of different meetings hearing about Founder's Row.
Can you summarize that? All right, anything else?
Good news. Yesterday I tried the custard.
Yeah.
Ice cream place is going to go into one of those kiosks along the Lincoln on Maple. So we're going to have, we're going to have frozen custard there.
That was fun.
Yeah, yeah. Unfortunately, I got there the later hour and I always left with weirdly mint Oreo or mango, not my choices, but anyway.
But you should have gotten that earlier. He bought the whole family.
Well, I'm glad to hear they have some tenant for that space.
Yeah, that's the bigger one that's kind of curved on the corner. So I think they picked a good location because their signage can be visible both from Orso and from Elevation Burger. So they'll have, and, and obviously from people going in the Target. So that'll be good, yeah.
I'm sorry, what was the name of this is?
It was like pottery and.
Yeah, it's weird. It's like ceramics and.
Yeah, because her business in Vienna is actually a pottery business with custard. So you make pottery and eat custard. And I, it was like pottery something.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know.
It will come to life.
Mr. Phil Duncan knows because he went to Vienna to taste it to see if they were worthy.
And we.
We don't have any soft serve in the cities. We really need some.
For a while we had everything, all the soft serve yogurt all over the place. Now we're saying now we're only down to one.
All right, and any other rumors?
These are very important issues here.
Well, actually, I'm really glad to see one of the kiosks that.
Me too.
Because the other two have no chance of being full until we see someone actually use one.
I agree. It's really, it's good news. I just didn't want to debate, I just feel flabbergasted.
I have a question.
Yeah.
I've noticed some construction going on on Great Falls near the bike path and weird detour signs going up.
It's in the street.
What is going on?
I, I don't know. I assume they're fixing infrastructure there, stormwater or something. And I assume that's a precursor because that road really needs to be repaved.
I just, it's setting up as, at some point, they're just going to close Great Falls because they have detour signs going up towards Virginia and stuff. I'm just curious. That's going to be, you'll call.
No, but they have the, the, um, people out in the field. I mean, they're standing in the street and letting you go or stopping you.
All right, great. Hopefully that'll be quicker than the bridge that they finally finished over there.
It's almost done. It's almost done. Van Buren.
On Van Buren.
Yeah.
Um, do you have the right equipment? It goes much faster.
Just very quickly, the winning developer for the high school will be announced tomorrow evening.
I know.
And that will launch or push that project a little further ahead.
Yes.
Stay tuned.
Yeah, I think there's a meeting coming up. I saw some kind of bi-meet invitations on there.
Well, there's the, um, town meeting, town.
Right, that's what I guess that's what it was, a town meeting.
Yeah, it's first Sunday in August, either fourth or the fifth.
It's the fifth, that's what it is. So there's going to be a meeting on August fifth about it.
Right, and there's a number of committees that the high school is setting up, advisory committees, and, and that's, they haven't done anything up till now, whether in the competitive process of the developers, but once that's selected, then those committees will move forward.
Yeah, they had a survey out where people could go in and say if they might be on the committee.
And select, right. And I'm sure it's probably still going to be open for people that want to be involved.
Well, that's very exciting. It's fashionable.
And if you didn't say it, the first Sunday is the fifth of August.
Yes.
Anything else? All right, then let's move to the planning director's report.
Paul submitted some information and updated work plan for most up to date. And then staff has started doing an updated demographic study for the city, and then that will ultimately work into updating our demographics chapter in our comprehensive plan. So both the R F P that went out and then the winning proposal that we received are both included in the attachments.
So why'd you pick, I guess, you may not know. I mean, what, what made the city decide on the vendor related of using?
I don't know all the criteria, but I know she had worked with U L I.
Didn't she present to us at some point?
She was the one presenting, yeah. She's got a lot of knowledge, a lot of knowledge of the area. It seems to be highly respected, so.
Second.
I like it.
Says work session, but I don't think we have anything to work on.
No.
All right. We're adjourned.
We're adjourned.
I agree.
Is that by motion or by order?
That's by order.
By order. We're going.
He just chooses gavel.
Do we know the schedule for the August meetings yet or not? Are they still?
The regular meetings are scheduled for the sixth and the twentieth. And on the sixth, I have, you're out of town and Tim and Melissa said yes.
No, I'm out of town. I'm out of town on the sixth.
Okay, I'm here for the sixth. I'm out of town for the twentieth.
I'm out of town for the twentieth.
I'm out of town for the sixth and the twentieth.
Do we have, do we have items on both of those dates?
There's nothing yet.
No? If we don't have any.
We might have to.
You need to get canceled.
Yeah, we do have to have a meeting.
Otherwise we go to jail.
So I think the sixth.
Maybe all together?
Who said they could be there on the sixth? Wouldn't that more people?
I am not here on the sixth.
I think I'm here. I could be here.
I'm here.
Could be.
I, I'm not planning on going.
There's three, both of them, I guess. Okay.
Uh, what's the twentieth? I could be here the twentieth.
Twenty. I'm not here the twentieth.
You are?
I'm not.
Okay, let's, let's ten, we'll talk about it. It'll probably be the twentieth. But with no agenda items, just to, you know, check in. Maybe we can put something like.
You can approve minutes.